So maybe just use your slides on your own and council members feel free to pull them up. I will forward them in email so it's at the top of your email.
And those agenda, are those posted on the website already?
I believe they are, but I'll double check that, yep.
Thank you.
All right, thanks council. I only get to see you once a month now, so these updates can get a little lengthy. And I know today's is pretty lengthy, so I'm going to speak quick. If I'm going too fast or you're just done listening to me, let me know and I will, I will cut it short. Let's go, so the slides are online, you said. So I assume you're looking at the administrative updates page. Go to the community engagement highlights with the link. That's our link to the feedback page where we try to collect all of the engagement projects in the city. So the community can go engage regularly when they have the time. Go to the next page for an engineering update. We've got an update on 21st South, which will have its first pave of the season coming up this week. Crews will pave the south side of the road from 7th East to Lincoln Street on Wednesday and Thursday night. This week between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. 1300 East reconstruction is ongoing and right now work is concentrated between I-80 and 2700 South. Construction will be completed in phases and is anticipated to be complete by fall of 2025. 300 North Project is in its final phase. Crews are working on finalizing concrete work and stop sign islands before they begin paving later this month. After that paving crews will finalize pavement markings and minor landscape items. And the project is on track to be done early August. The next slide is the transportation projects for safer streets. And there's a typo on here, but I guess you won't know that, so I'll mention it to the community. The Capitol Hill Traffic Calming Project in the Capitol Hill neighborhood, which was a CCIP project for concerns around speeding and unsafe crossings. Construction at 600 North and 200 West is now complete, which wraps up the first Zone of Livable Streets program. Kensington Neighborhood Byway is another project hoping to make all transportation modes safe in the city. For this project, construction is underway around 700 East and 500 East and progressing from east to west along the byway route. Popular Grove Neighborhood Byway also aims to create safe, comfortable streets in Popular Grove. Transportation and engineering are currently determining how to best implement improvements along Emory Street and 600 South. Engagement will follow once coordination with neighbor, or nearby projects is complete. Sugar House Safe Side Streets is also a CCIP project. It's also substantially complete. Traffic Circle is complete on Ramona and 10th East. The project team is looking at further striping and signing improvements in the area. Livable Streets Update. City is divided into zones and that references a lot of places in the city. It's best looked at on a website, but generally speaking, in case you're following the projects, Zone 2 to 4 are nearly finished. Zone 2 to 3 are wrapping up work near 900 West. And engagements for Zone 5 to 9 begins summer 2025. Zones 12 through 18 are also moving to engagement this summer. Westminster to Sunnyside Neighborhood Byway, the public engagement period is now closed and the Transportation Division and consultants are reviewing the feedback received. A lot of engagement work was done by the community, or with the community on this project. And a summary of that feedback will be published on the project website as soon as it's ready. The next phase is civil engineering design, which will consider site constraints, project budget and community input. Although this project's construction has not yet been funded. West Point and Jordan Meadows Neighborhood Byway is linking Park Schools and the Jordan River Trail and other key destinations. And construction is anticipated to begin on that project, June 2025. 2025 Lane Reconfigurations. Planned reconfigurations on 21st South, and here's where the typo is, and 700 East has been postponed due to SB 195. The 2100 South Resurfacing Project has also been postponed because the pavement has degraded to the point where it needs more work. Resurfacing on 700 East is still scheduled for the summer. However, the striping will remain largely the same with no lane reconfigurations at this time. Resurfacing on 1700 South, 9th East to 11th East, is also moving forward this summer. That project includes the removal of parking on the north side of the street to accommodate a westbound bike lane. Both 700 East and 1700 South will be restriped in a way that allows for future lane reconfiguration, even though it is unlikely lane changes will be implemented this year. California Avenue Pedestrian Study aims to improve pedestrian safety on California Avenue at the Glendale Drive and Concord Street intersections near Mountain View Elementary School. The city is revising earlier design concepts due to reconstruction feasibility concerns and is coordinating closely with engineering. This project is fully funded. Next page. 300 West Bike Way creates a protected bike way on 300 West from 900 South to 300 South. We've now hit construction phase on this and that should start in June. 400 South Safety Improvements is a CCIP project adding pedestrian safety at the intersection of Goshen and 10th West along 400 South. The project has reached substantial completion. The Ballpark Station Crosswalk Project adds signalized crosswalks to help people navigate busy intersections. Most construction is complete and the new crosswalk signals will be installed later this year. Bus Stop Improvements. Collaborating with UTA and UDOT, this is to enhance bus stops on 900 East, State Street and Redwood Road. Construction has started on the southbound 900 East, 10th South stop and will continue southward. 400 South Viaduct Trail Product, Project. UDOT and Transportation are working together to create a multi-use trail along 400 South from 900 West to 200 West. The project has a contractor onboard and will be starting early summer. Sunnyside Avenue Safety Improvements. This is on Sunnyside near 1400 East. Included many pedestrian safety enhancements and it is also on hold due to SB 195. Next slide, more transportation projects. I'm going fast, is this okay? This is, okay. 1300 East University District Circulation Study will recommend transportation improvements, including multimodal connections, transit and traffic management near the university. The transportation team is working to extend the consultant's contract through the end of 2025 to allow for additional public engagement and data collection, especially in light of SB 195 and some desire for more neighborhood engagement. Two public meetings are being planned, along with outreach via social media, neighborhood canvassing, coordination with nearby businesses and engagement with students at the University of Utah. 600, 700 North Reconstruction. Work to rebuild the road has begun and is focused on two main areas, 1200 to 1500 West and the 700 North Redwood Road Intersection. One lane in each direction will be open on the north side of the, of the street during construction. Delays are anticipated during peak commute times and during special events. No detours are in place for this work. West East Connections. This $1.9 million federal grant is underway to work on the east-west divide in the city. The Community Advisory Board has been selected and the public, and a public open house is scheduled for May 21st from 5:30 to 7, 7 o'clock PM at Edison Elementary School. An online public survey is also currently open and available for community input. And as I reference these links, of course, it's on the feedback page. We'll have them all there for people to go to. Moving on to the next slide, which is Public Lands Projects. The Foothill Trailheads improve, they're improving access to cities' most popular trailheads, including new amenities to help facilitate access to the trails and increase safety and use. The grand opening for these new trailheads is scheduled for Wednesday, May 28th at 9:00 AM at the Bonneville Boulevard Trailhead. Fairmont Park Improvements focuses on updating this beloved community park and has been guided by public input on how to improve recreation amenities and safety. Consultants met with stakeholder groups this last week to share findings from the March survey and engagement events. A summary report will be posted online soon. The next step, developing concept designs, is on hold until a decision is made about the future of the Boys and Girls Club alongside the park. Hopefully that'll happen in June. And there are three conceptual designs for Sunnyside Park based on the community's feedback. You can review the designs and share your thoughts through the online survey open until May 31st. Visit the project website to take the survey and watch a video explaining the concept designs in detail. And that will be linked to, by the feedback page, through the feedback page. Couple of slides on planning. Let's go to some zoning codes, RMF 35 and RMF 45. So this is the next slide. I'm not sure who I'm telling. Hopefully it's, it's moving. Should say Planning Zoning Codes at the top. Started, this is a, started as a proposal to merge two similar multifamily residential zones to simplify zoning and ordinance and increase housing flexibility. The updated proposal will go in front of the Planning Commission on May 14th. Instead of merging the zones, however, the plan is now to keep them separate, but aligns their regulations except for building height. Revision responds to public and commission input gathered since the first public hearing in March. Separating residential, residential use from high impact uses. There's a zoning amendment that would prevent high impact industrial uses from being placed near all residential uses. The Planning Commission recommended adoption of this amendment on March 12th and a formal transmittal is coming to the city council. Adaptive Reuse Incentive Update was recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission at its April 23rd meeting. This expands staff level approvals using incentives for adaptive reuse. Fence Height Amendments will clarify and slightly adjust rules for fence height alongside the lot lines and rear yards and regulations in manufacturing zones. The 45-day public input period closes on May 8th. Next slide. A couple of community plans. Avenues and Capitol Hill Community Plans are comprehensive updates to both neighborhoods, which is anticipated throughout this year and maybe into next. Public engagement on that should begin in June of this year. Rio Grande District Plan Update aligns the downtown plan and on, along with the Rio Grande District Implementation Strategy produced by the CRA. The 45-day public input period ended May 1st, so Planning, Planning Commission, public hearing will be scheduled soon on that. Northwest Community Plan. Multiple events been scheduled over the next month to engage with the community to plan for future growth, including tabling at community event, community events, and the team is also finalizing a pop-up community event with local businesses. To date, the team has held multiple community meetings and attended other community events to identify growth and land use related themes to be included in the project. And the last slide, just a couple of updates from the mayor's office. 10 of the 16 mini-grant projects have been completed for the Love Your Block program and all of the remaining projects should be done by the end of the month. Also, by the end of this month, the new application period will close at 11:59 PM. So we encourage folks to sign up for the next cycle of Love Your Block grants. SLC Core Group supported public lands for part of their Earth Day, specifically their Green Day event this year. It was a huge success. And our community office hours for my team are going to be posted soon. And mainly, we're going to post the community events that my team will be attending and would love to hear from the community at any of those events. Thanks for your patience. That's it.
I know that Weston may need to step out in a second, so I'll excuse you. Next two slides are homelessness-related slides. If you have those pulled up. At the top of the first one is the current utilization rate, 92.5%. It's lower than we've seen in the past. Part of this is because of the ramp down of winter beds in at least one location. So sometimes those beds are open because they're going to be closed pretty soon in April, but they count towards the full, the full number. The next piece is encampment impact mitigation work and rapid intervention work. There is no EIM this week, but there will be work being done on 5 Preserve, Backminded Day Riverside along the river, 17th East and 23rd South, kind of country club area. And then some various constituent locations have been reported across the city. And there is a resource fair this Friday at Library Square that will include the Justice Court. So there's not Outreach Kayak Court this month. And the next slide is a little breakdown of the winter shelter bed availability. So this council passed temporary land use resolutions for three different locations this year for the summertime. On the, the slide you'll see there's a year-round column and then a summer column. Year-round column are the beds that are officially year-round beds in those locations. And then the summer are really temporary ones by definition. Now, some of those have been continuous for the last year because of ongoing resolutions in the last two years to keep them open. But it gives you a sense of the number of beds. Total is 13, 13, 13 this summer. That means that all the current winter beds are going to remain open except for the winter overflow at the Pamela Atkinson Resource Center in South Salt Lake. Those will revert back to 300 beds instead of 375. And then you can see the family shelter at the bottom is 300 beds year-round. And then the Finch, which is the new motel in South Salt Lake that was dedicated towards family needs, that will have up to 72 rooms for families. So really 72 families, probably over 200 people, depending on the size of those families when it's fully up and running. They'll be ramping that up this month into next month, about six families a week. Generally speaking, families who need help will go to the family shelter first and then transition to the Finch after that. That's kind of how the family flow goes. Are there any questions on this slide? That's all I have. Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Questions? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Just a quick update on our screens. IMS is working on getting the screens started, but we may not have them for our work session today. So Scott Corpney will be emailing you all of the presentations so that you can pull them up on your email and follow along that way. They're also on our online packets for the public that are joining and they're in Dropbox as well. So, thanks for your patience.
Okay. Next, we have an ordinance on the North Point area annexation. So for that, we've got Nick Tarbet, Nick Tarbet from the council staff and then, do we have Chrissy? Yeah. I have Chrissy and Thais. Is that right?
Chrissy and Thais are here to answer any technical questions the council may have. I did email you just a minute ago, an attachment with the maps that we would be showing on the screen. So those could come in handy as we're stepping through the, the update. So this is the, what we refer to as the North Point Annexation. Last year in April, the council initiated the city-led annexation for the land in this. It's generally along 2200 West, north of 2100 North, up to the Davis County boundaries. The process has taken longer than originally anticipated because as we were going through the process, it was determined that the boundaries between Salt Lake County and Davis County did not align with the records which we had. So they had to go through and update those. That was based on the Jordan River having some movement over the course of the last few decades. So city staff was able to clean those up with the county and we're now in the process where the council can consider moving forward with the annexation. The big question at this point is the zoning for the properties in this area. When the North Point Small Area Plan was adopted, at that time, the annexation was not anticipated to be finalized in the near run and we didn't have the zoning in place. So the council in the Small Area Plan stated that if the annexation is received before the new zoning is created, that any development would have to come in through a development agreement. Because this took longer, the council did adopt the M1A zoning, which is envisioned to be for the transitional area of the Small Area Plan. I won't say, a majority of the property owners in that transitional area have requested that the council adopt the, when you do the annexation, that you bring them in under the M1A zoning district at this time. Those emails have been sent to you with the request for that. So that is the big question for the council to make that decision. There's a few on the maps. You can see it's, I think it's the first page. You can see the green are the private properties and then there's some gray shaded area. Those are airport properties. So those would be zoned airport. There's also one parcel, city-owned parcel in the green area that would be, that is currently proposed to be zoned ag. The transmittal came with the, I won't, Chrissy, I won't say it's a recommendation, but the map was shown that the properties are ag because planning wanted the council to make that policy decision whether or not to proceed with the M1A for the properties within that transitional area.
Okay. Questions?
Mr. Chair, just wanted to confirm, Nick, you said that the Planning Commission forwarded a recommendation with...
There's no, no, there's not a Planning Commission recommendation.
Oh, that's right, because Planning Staff forwarded a recommendation that just basically said for us to choose not, not that one was more appropriate for any reason or another.
Yeah, we kept it as the most similar zone that's in the county right now, which is AG2. So you'll see that like to like across the board. There are, in your packet, there's a couple of properties that are around that airport property, which are currently zoned M1 in the county, which I do think would be appropriate for the new M1A if, if the council wants to look at those two.
Councilmember Dugan.
And just to remind me, Nick, when we did the rezone, we looked at the setbacks from the canal and the river, the trees, the type of manufacturing, the transportation and the trucks going in and out. All that was, is incorporated in the M1A zone, correct?
Yes, those concepts are in there.
Okay. So everything we did in the past is, we've already passed all this. This is just a timing issue. Whereas since it's been delayed, there's no need to, them to go through the whole process again because we've already now, we're at the point where they can, we've set the zone and now we can implement it at the same time by going through the process to go through that whole same loop.
True. Yeah, if, if the council were to go with M, with the ag, I suspect all those property owners in that area would immediately submit zoning petitions to rezone this to the M1A.
Right.
Except they'd be mad at us and we wouldn't get anything else out of development agreement. This essentially, we essentially codified the development agreement we did on the one that went ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think this is really great. All of the developers who are asking to have been at meetings with my constituents out there. So while there's still some constituents who are on the nothing should change ever out here, the ones who are anchored to the understanding that by the time we were able to get to the strategic plan, half of the property, property owners wanted this transition while the other half wanted ag. Those people agree that this is, they don't love it, but this is where safety is for them.
Councilmember Poy.
So, so we're leaning towards the option number A? Is that what it is or is?
The annexation in with the M1A.
M1A.
Because that zone was, that zone was developed directly responsive to this area, the needs. It's essentially that development agreement we approved with the other developer.
Nick, when we don't have a development agreement and it's just the code being enforced, when an issue comes up, like we talked about the trees, right? And we talked about how they have to be spaced. Remember the last applicant asked, is it an aggregate number of trees that we're aiming for or is it the specific placement that we're concerned with? How does that get dealt with now? Do we use the precedent that we set with the previous developer or?
Yeah, so the M1A code has that specific tree requirement, which is one tree per every 30 feet. There are some options for clustering those trees. But if they did have concerns where they some, for some reason couldn't make it work on their property, they could request a modification through our plan development process with approval from the Planning Commission.
So basically come, come to the city and petition a variance of some sort and go through the process to explain why and so, okay.
So we still have recourse?
Yeah. And I, and I, certainly it feels to me that not, no move into M1A will create all sorts of bureaucracy to the city, to the administration for something that we already sort of hashed out with the neighbors. And, and it's spending taxpayer dollars where we probably shouldn't. So I am leaning to support that, that motion.
If I can add, just so the council's aware, there will, if the council goes with the zoning, there are developers who have met early with planning just to get some initial feedback. There will be construction very quickly. And one piece of really good news is by having this annexation completed, there's a bypass road further west that has to be completed before Phase 2 of the Skenele Development can go forward. And that is something that the property owners along 2200 West have been asking for, for many, many years now.
Okay. I think we don't have any other questions then. Thank you so much.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
Sorry. I guess it's the big one.
Yes, we do have one more question.
Does the council want to adopt the M1A based on the boundaries of the transitional area in the Small Area Plan? Or do you want to do it just based on the property owners who have reached out?
My preference is exclusively on the requesting property owners. It gives us more leverage later on if, if we find that we've, we don't have the protections we want.
So just on the property owners that have requested it?
That's my, that's my strong preference.
If we can have a straw poll on that, then we can make that.
So I'll call the, I'll call the question then to approve, approve the M1A with annexation only for the property owners that have specifically requested it at this time.
Can I have just a little more discussion on that? Cause I thought, what earlier we were saying was that it was kind of the other way around.
Yeah.
So just tell, help me.
So there's a whole transitional area. If that area never gets sold to a commercial developer and someone has a change of heart and wants to keep it ag, I have a strong preference for that. You know, we're only doing, the only pressure to make it something that can be commercialized is because current residential landowners have been requesting this out of us. So I like that allows us, if some miracle happens where we can preserve it as ag, that we do. The other thing I like is that if we see that someone got something by us and we don't have the protections in the M1A that we want or we need a refinement, it gives us options for developer agreements when they ask for a rezone in the future. And it gives us leverage and control over what's arguably the most difficult couple hundred acres in the city. Councilmember Dugan, do you have anything to add to that? Cause you're, you're the other one who's been fighting for this area with me.
So I guess my question is, is, does it undermine what we were saying earlier about like responsible tax or use of money? If we're expecting that the current landowners have already asked for this, do you think all the other landowners are going to also come and ask for it? And it would be more efficient to just do it the other way?
I don't have a sense at this time. The ones who, the ones who are asking for it are the ones who have stayed with us the whole time, who are really driving changes in the area. So to me, it feels responsive to the pressures we have.
Is that the sense from the administration as well? Or is it?
I'm, I think, you know, we don't really have a preference. We'd be looking to your feedback, but I think Councilmember Petro's right, that the property owners we've heard from, we've heard from the beginning that they are interested in this, this change.
They, they are the larger property owners. They own a significant amount of property. It's the residents that are along 2200 West. The Councilmember Petro understands better than anybody, but they have not asked for this at this point.
Okay.
So that makes sense. So it gives them a tool if they want to go that way, but not.
But if not, we can preserve some ag and sanity for the people who want that.
And they're the minority in, in this case.
Correct.
Can I, I'm sorry. Can I add one more wrinkle? We need, I just needed to make sure to draw this to your attention. On the Small Area Plan, which is on the second page, no, maybe it's the first page, I'm sorry. The second page. Crossy Ranch owns in their part of the annexation at this time, a significant portion of their property is north of that Center Street divide. Center Street is what the boundary, was the northern boundary of the Small Area Plan study. And they have requested to come in under the M1A, which would mirror what is south of the Small Area Plan boundary.
So, let me understand. So their, their property is, includes multiple parcels and some of the parcels are within this, this potential change. Some of them are not. But we are, they are requesting that all of their parcels are included in this.
They are all within the annexation, yes, from the city-initiated one. Their boundaries have all been in it from the beginning. The difference is on the Small Area Plan, which technically ended at Center Street. On our map, it makes it look like the area north of that was identified by the Small Area Plan to be open space. That was not part of the study. So, but they are asking to come in under the M1A for the entirety of their property, which is north of that as well, along the Jordan River.
Okay. Councilmember Monno.
Thanks. Is the number of individual parcels reasonable enough that we could just send even an email to them or something that says, this is what we're thinking, because we just made a decision that some properties, if you specifically ask, are going to get a certain zone. And other properties, even in the same transitional zone, will get a different zone, which seems appropriate. But I think the properties that didn't request are probably also the ones that may actually want that. Because theoretically, that brings higher land value to them. They may actually want that and not have the means to go through a rezone process later, which would leave it up to other developers to go speculate their. which would leave it up to other developers to go speculate their land and then come to us for a rezone to increase their investment, rather than being able to sell at the higher value anyway, if that's what their initial plan is. So, I think if we're giving the properties owned by developers this easier path to the zone, that's, that we should at least give them a notice. But I'll defer to the council member over.
I feel like everyone out there has had lots and lots and lots of engagement.
That's fair. And you've been involved in that.
I actually think it would have to be a pretty exceptional landowner or land contractor at this point to not know what their options are.
Okay. Mr. Chair, on the, Nick, on the property north of Center Street, how many acres is that for the, and is it a lot, is it a majority of that? Or is it just along the river, but it's still, it still would be within the 1A requirements?
I don't know the exact acreage.
And was that just kind of more of a, we just, we didn't think about the small area plan going further north than Center Street? Oh, I wasn't quite sure why we didn't do that.
Yeah, that's right. At that time, that area was not anticipated to be annexed into the city, so it just wasn't included in our analysis. The vision map does show it, but that was just more of a visionary idea from the consultant than staff actually doing an analysis.
Okay, and it was just our, hey, Center Street is the dividing line, because everything in north of that was not going to be annexed to the, it was going to stay with the county, Davis County.
That's correct.
Right.
Salt Lake, unincorporated part of Salt Lake County.
Okay, unincorporated, okay.
Yeah, and they, but then they did reach out shortly after the small area plan was finalized to indicate their support for the annexation from the beginning.
Okay.
They had asked to stay out of that, previous to that.
And now that annexation goes all the way to the North Salt Lake?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, do, does, do we need, are we expecting to give some sort of direction as far as this property? And if we are applying the ones...
So, I'm hearing that the council is okay with applying the M1A to the property owner, to the properties where the owners have reached out to the city requesting to be included. And then we would like to confirm with the council that if, on the first page, there's two properties that are currently M1 in the county, if we could apply the M1A to that to stay consistent with their current zoning.
And will that solve the issue with the ranch? Yes, okay, that summarizes my feelings too.
Okay, we will do that and bring it back for potential adoption at a future council meeting, at which time it goes to Lieutenant Governor's office for final approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is an alley closure at approximately nine North Chicago Street at Madison Park.
At the table, we're going to have Brian Fulmer, Council Policy Analyst, and Riley Hall, Principal Planner, and some other guests.
This is a proposal from the administration to close a portion of an alley within Madison Park in Council District Two. The alley has been incorporated into the park. Enclosing it would allow the various parcels that comprise the park to be consolidated into one parcel in order to facilitate park improvements funded by the Parks, Trails, and Open Space General Obligation Bond. And I'll turn it over to Riley.
Thank you. My name is Riley Hall, and I am a Principal Planner in the Planning Division, and I will be presenting the alley closure request. Next slide, please. Can I get the next slide? There we go. Okay. So, this request is to close a portion of an alley between 1,000 West and Chicago Street. It lies entirely within the boundaries of Madison Park, and it's approximately 297 feet long and 15.5 feet wide. The image on the right side of the screen shows Madison Park, and then the approximate location of the alley within it that's highlighted in yellow. It has been fully incorporated into Madison Park as part of a grassy multipurpose field and a basketball court, and there are no nearby properties that rely on it for access. The purpose of the request is to allow the consolidation of all parcels that make up Madison Park for future improvements. A building permit can't be issued for structures or improvements that cross property lines or that encroach into public rights of way. So, the first step in this process is to close the alley and consolidate the parcels. Next slide, please. This alley closure is regulated by State Code 72-5-10545 and 7, and this allows an alley to be closed and converted to another public use. The City Council may close this portion of the alley if they find that one of the following three considerations are met. It isn't necessary for vehicular travel, it's necessary to correct or mitigate injury to private or public land resources, or it's necessary to mitigate unsafe conditions. Next slide, please. As I stated earlier, the portion of the alley that is requested to be closed has been fully incorporated into Madison Park. The image on the left of the screen shows the alley's location within the park, and the images on the right show the current conditions of the alley. It hasn't been used as a public right-of-way for cars for many years, and it has never been paved, and there are no nearby properties that rely on it for access. Because of these reasons, the City Council may find that the portion of the alley that is requested to be closed isn't necessary for vehicular travel, and that the proposed closure is warranted. Next slide, please. The alley closure is subject to the early notification process in City Code 21A10. This involves a 45-day public comment period that is started by sending notices to the local recognized community organizations. This notice was sent to both the Fair Park and Poplar Grove Community Councils. In addition, a notice was sent to all property owners and residents within 300 feet of the alley, or the portion of the alley that is proposed to be closed, and a sign notice was placed at the property. The Planning Division also held a virtual open house. This is still available to view on the Planning Division's website, and it will remain posted until a decision has been made by the City Council. State Code also requires additional noticing. This includes noticing to the abutting property owners of the, and notifying UDOT of the public hearing. As of today, the Planning Division hasn't received any public comment on the proposal. The City Council may choose to either adopt or deny the ordinance that would indefinitely close that portion of the alley, and if it is approved, the closed alley will continue to be part of Madison Park. Next slide, please. That's my presentation. I'm happy to address any comments or questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick question. You know, I've seen this, this park a lot, and I, you know, been in it very often, and never realized that there was a, an alley in between the grass, really, there, imaginary alley there. And that's, it makes sense to consolidate this and to make it fully a part of the park. Are we, to the properties north of that boundary, are we also closing that part of the alley, or is it just until the park finishes that the consolidation stops?
Yeah, so there, the proposed alley closure area is only within the boundaries of Madison Park. The alley that is north of Madison Park is not included in this request.
Yeah, so I support the, obviously, the consolidation within the park, and I think that would allow us to ensure that we are using the GeoBond funding correctly within property that we actually own, and that we have the right-of-way for its usage. So, if that is the only caveat that it is within the park, I'm supportive of this.
Me too. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on Agenda Item Number Four, which is the FY 2025-26 Budget Administration's Revenue Update.
Hello, everybody. My name's Andrew Reed. I'm the Deputy Budget Director for the Finance Department, and I oversee the revenues for the city. So, I believe you guys have the slide deck. Is that correct? The revenue budget overview? Okay, cool. So, if you guys go to the first slide, the general fund revenue, you'll see pie chart here. The majority of our revenues, as you already kind of know, are property tax and sales taxes. They range, depending on if we're considering the use of fund balance, the percentage is about 65 to 80, or 68, 65 to 68% of our revenue use. And as you can kind of see, we have reduced our use of fund balance by close to $14 million from last year to this year. If you go to the next, and feel free to stop me going forward, so, go to the next slide. These are our major changes going into next year. We can see a, we've considered a large increase from, kind of a increment that we're receiving from the Inland Port Authority, and we started receiving that last year, and started realizing it in the current fiscal year. So, that's now budgeted for next year. And then with sales tax, we're seeing an increase mostly due to Rocky Mountain Power electricity rates increasing, and also we're seeing pretty, you know, at least on par spending in regards to sales tax. So, it's definitely flattened out, but it's kind of, you know, hitting where we projected it this year. And then in regards to permits, or I guess licensing specifically, we've seen an increase, or we're anticipating seeing an increase in licenses and innkeepers, the room tax. We've also, are anticipating increase in reimbursement funds from police and other large departments, and also we've increased some, increased transfers from ongoing CIP and other departments, and some one-time CIP, and debt service from other departments.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just going back to the sales side of the house, I know our, our figures are always two months lagging, and we're projecting, and we're very conservative with our sales tax numbers, and I know we've been that way for, since as long as I've been on the council, and I know probably many years before that. Has this number changed, or have we, since the tariffs and tourism has been affected by a number of things going on at the level, have we, is this still conservative in that nature? Because I know just nationwide, tourism-wide has gone down, and I believe that's probably going to impact Salt Lake City and our airport as in, out of country travel here, or even in-country travel here. Is that number also been adjusted since that timeframe over the last month or two? Or is it, because you get, you get these estimates from the state, or do you, do you just...
A combination. So, we look at historical values by sectors, and we're also utilize the forecast from the Utah Economic Council. So, they're still projecting an increase, and we're in line with their increases. But we have, but I have noticed, you know, from their projection in December to their projection in March, they have reduced, they're still anticipating an increase year over year, but they are starting to pare down that, that projection. So, we're kind of keeping an eye on that, kind of to the notion on if we've made any changes since, you know, any notion of tariffs have come online. We have not. But to let you know, you know, we're already, we're very conservative going into the year with the uncertainty just in, in the sales tax economy just in general. So, we had seen a flattening in the sales tax overall going into this year. So, we were already very conservative kind of with that number. And that's kind of, I'll get to some more slides later on, and we can maybe dive in a little bit deeper. But, yeah, for the most part, you know, we haven't made any immediate changes because it's hard to really know the long-term impact with these things. And, yeah, so...
Yeah, because I'd be interested to see, I know tourism is, is still probably a pretty good size of our sales tax number, maybe not, I'm not sure what the percentage is. And is there a projection that flat, or is there a projection at a minus, you know, negative 9% or negative 10% or negative 20% on the sales tax revenue from the tourism side of the house? Not the, I'm not really looking at the other line items that, that go into effect for the sales tax, just more the tourism side of the house, so...
Yeah, and I, I won't have any specific numbers on tourism specifically, or the increases to tourism, but I'm happy to research that a little bit more and just put that into our consideration. Let me continue with the slides, and if I haven't answered your question, then we can continue on, so. So, with the current year projection, we are anticipating revenues coming about $9 million higher than we originally budgeted for. The main increases, as I alluded to on the first slide, or the second slide, from property tax, the personal property tax increase, the $5 million that we started realizing. And then we are just more, the sales tax increase you see there is due to the Rocky Mountain Power increases. We're really projecting sales tax to come in right in line, right on where we budgeted the number this year.
Yeah, sorry, there's a little bit of a delay in the slide updating, just based on how we're using the click share. Thanks.
All right, so the next slide here, you'll see a history of property taxes. We are anticipating a slight increase, about $2 million in new growth in real property, and a slight increase in RDA growth as well.
Quick question, sorry.
Yeah, a quick question from the slide before. Is this that we are seeing a lowering of permits by $422,000? Do we have a little more context to that? Is it like, you know, a significant drop in that line item at least?
I don't have the exact figure. I can do a little deeper dive exactly. I apologize, I don't have that note on permits with me. We tend to kind of bunch licenses and permits together, but I can get you a follow-up.
You know, I'm curious about that a little bit, and then parking meters, you know, the drop in revenue there, and, you know, why all of those drops are...
In regards to the parking meters, I know we've installed some new meters in the last year, and it took a bit longer for those to go online, so that's kind of why I think that number got pared down. But we are expecting an increase going into next fiscal year.
So, help me understand that, I guess I, I didn't know that. So, yeah, we did approve, I will use the word carefully there, but the new parking meters, but I, so some of them were not functioning, or they took longer to function, so we were not receiving the revenue from some parts of the city. Is that what...
Yeah, my understanding is just the time it takes to transition one meter to the updated new one that they were installing takes some time to get those online and actually collecting revenue.
I would love a little more information from the administration about that, since, you know, there was quite a bit of a rushed feeling about the new company and the new services and getting that going, to then learning that it wasn't a smooth transition. I would love to learn a little more about how that happened, so I, I'm curious. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yep. All right. History of property taxes, yeah, like I said before, this is, we're just showing kind of increase in new growth to real property there. On the following slide, we've broken up the property tax values by commercial values and residential values. The trend kind of just shows... The trend kind of just shows, you know, you kind of see a continued trend going forward. We're still working with our GIS team with the, in the IMS department just on, you know, accuracy with, with this data kind of going forward. We are getting, getting better with the history. Do you guys have any questions on this slide? In regards now on history of general sales tax. So this graph that you're seeing here is just focused on the 1% sales tax that we charge. So there's other, you know, the Funding Our Future piece that goes into that sales tax. But this is just the 1% that we're showing on the revenue that we receive. The pink bar that you see is just showing that our projection is coming in right on target. We're just roughly within a 200K of the mean of 90, of the 94 million. So we're pretty spot-on. I feel really confident in that number. And then we also feel comfortable, you know, going forward into the next year with a moderate increase to sales taxes, you know, with, with kind of some of the uncertainty that's going on. The next slide that we have here is really our final slide. So this is just showing a comparison of the current revenues, so broken out by those sales tax categories, just comparing fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25. Retail trade is our, our biggest sector. It's close to 40% of all the revenue that we receive. But it is definitely being buoyed by accommodations and food services, wholesale trade, and real estate. And some professional and scientific services are kind of booing that sector. Definitely, we've seen strong sales in, you know, the restaurants and accommodations going forward. And we're starting to see a pickup more with wholesale trade. Wholesale trade and retail trade kind, you kind of, they're kind of pretty much the same thing. The wholesalers are a little bit larger businesses that tend to sell at the wholesale prices versus retailers tend to, are small, smaller type of businesses. Any questions here? You know, the main thing here is, I think, what, one thing this graph doesn't really show is how diversified these sectors are. So retail, you know, can go anywhere, can, has industry, you know, has about 40 different industries that are under it. And they can range from motor vehicle parts to beverages, to building materials, things like that. So it is a pretty diversified sector. And, you know, even with the uncertainty, we believe that, you know, we're still going to, you know, edge out some gains kind of going into the near future. You know, kind of going forward into kind of what you're alluded to earlier, you know, with the uncertainty going forward, is last year, we had done a risk analysis with GFOA. So Shane Kavanaugh had helped us develop a risk analysis. We're kind of in the midst of updating that to this year's numbers. But, you know, based off of what we learned from that model that was put in, that we're in a very healthy place going forward. And our, our fund balance is, is really healthy going forward. And that kind of gives us confidence going forward that we can kind of weather some storms and not impact our future borrowing power kind of going into the future. But yeah, there is some uncertainty that, yeah, I'm fair to say, I don't really know exactly kind of going forward, and I don't think anybody really knows. But our city is in a very healthy place. But we do need to be kind of considerate of things going forward, for sure. So, and that's it? Yeah? If you guys have any questions.
I mean, basically, your, your sales tax is flat. I mean, at 1 million over 120 million, it's flat compared to last year. So it's not like we are expecting it to go either way. So I'm, I'm, I feel comfortable that it's relatively flat as in it's only the 1%, I guess, increase. Very small increase in sales tax. So, okay.
Yeah, and I mean, one thing too, as an example, when I really started focusing on sales tax, you know, if you look back on the slide seven, the history of general sales tax, when COVID happened, we made a big, a big move in dropping our budget. And if you can see, we made a really big mistake if you look at the years after. So, you know, whether, you know, kind of gave us a safety net with fund balance. But that is something, you know, we're kind of considering going forward is some of these exogenous impacts. It really, there's a lot of other factors that go into this. And we don't really know the ripple effects with the city. So we're still, we're still kind of learning as we go along.
And I'll just chime in to give finance a little credit. I, I don't think that that move was a mistake necessarily because I think at the time, it was, the uncertainty was huge. And I think the infusion of federal dollars was not guaranteed. And I think that that really did help keep people spending in the economy. And so, but to your point, it meant that our budget was very, you know, small-c conservative for what we actually received in sales tax receipts. So it is that game of predicting where if you are small-c conservative about it, then that money drops to fund balance if we end up overperforming. But if you underperform, then you're in a tough spot because then you have to find a way to cut your budget in the middle of the. So.
Sure, sure. Thank you. The, I, again, I, when I see the 21, 22, 23, you know, yes, those columns are not close to each other, but, but at the end, the correct order of how I prefer them to be on a line. So I, I prefer them to be closer, certainly. But ultimately, I want to make sure that we are not spending or budgeting to spend more money than, that we may not have. And again, predicting the future seems very hard. But I, my biggest concern right now relates to not so much about the revenue. Certainly, we understand the, the projection of what the revenue will be. But to what extent all of this uncertainty that is happening across is going to affect all of our major capital improvements projects and, and projects? And, and it seems to me that that is where the biggest problem lays, is do we, do we really understand how much money we're going to need to build, you know, the parks? And, you know, and reconstruct our roads when steel is going up? And all those ripple effects take, you know, months to actually affect us. So I, I don't understand how this is, it's sort of magic to me. But it really is very concerning to see this flattening of, of numbers when I, when we're going to see more likely than not an increased cost in our, in the services that we provide. So to me, that means that we are going to deliver fewer or services, or have to cut down on some of the time, you know, extend some of the timelines to accomplish some of the goals that we have set because of those costs. But again, that might be my feeling, just reading, maybe I'm reading too much of the news right now.
So one of the things that I wanted to let you know is next week Natalie Gottner will be here. I think one of the things that she has told us, which I want to tell all of you, and she will reiterate this, is it's the uncertain times that are creating this. It's not so much the tariffs. It's the yo-yo of uncertain times that is creating everything that's going on. And so I think that, I think we have to be cautious with the tariffs. But I think we have to be really concerned with the uncertain times. And what happens is people like myself or anyone else get nervous, right? And I pull back, and I stop spending. When I stop spending, and you all stop spending, that's when our economy hurts. Not so much the tariffs. It's when we stop spending and we get scared. So I think that, you know, it's the uncertainty of what's going on in the economy more than it is the tariffs themselves.
So this, this is kind of like a paradox question though, because when I hear that, you know, next year we're looking at having to do a moderate tax increase if we continue on this track, you know, the inclination is like, okay, well, how can we cut to avoid it? But then without contributing to kind of the sloughage, I guess you could say. And as, I know you might not have the answer to this question, but you probably have a better answer than I do. Like, how would you approach that as we go through this budget and the rest of this year and into next? How do you balance those things?
Yeah, I think balancing it all is tough, right? I mean, I, I can't say that it's not tough. I will say that I think that the departments, the administration, the mayor, mayor's staff, my staff, as I was out, have done a really good job in being pretty conservative with the expenditures, which you will see next week in this budget. It's still going to be tough, right? The uncertainty is tough. That means that we have to monitor closer. That means we have to watch the expenditures closer, closer in the city. That means we have to monitor the revenues much closer than we have in the past. It's going to be tough. But that's the answer that I would give, council member.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, please. Okay, we're on to item number five, which is the 2025-26 budget for the Metropolitan Water District. And we have with us Austin Kimmel from the council policy staff. We have Annalee Munsey from the Metro Water, the general manager for Metro Water District, and Tom Godfrey, the board chair for Metro Water. Welcome. Good to see you both. And good to see you too, Austin.
Good to see you too. Thanks, council members. The Metropolitan Water District of Salt Lake and Sandy is here to present its tentative budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026 fiscal year. The council's role in Metro's water, in Metro Water's budget is somewhat unique. The council reviews the budget and shares the responsibility with Sandy City Council to approve and set the tax rate, but it does not formally adopt the budget. That responsibility rests with Metro Water's Board of Trustees. Metro Water's primary function is to store, treat, and convey water supplies for Salt Lake City and Sandy. It is also one of the taxing entities that appears as a line on property taxes for property owners. This year's total budget is just over $111 million, about a $9.9 million increase from last year. The increase is driven primarily by costs from other agencies, price increases from utility providers such as gas and power, increased personnel costs, and costs associated with the Cottonwoods Connection Project. Metro Water proposes a 5% increase to the rate charged to member cities for water sales, and a 5% increase to water rates for non-member entities. Metro Water does not propose a property tax increase this year, and the projected certified tax rate is proposed at .00035. Lastly, Metro Water proposes a 4% salary increase for employees and intends to increase its FTE count by four, bringing, bringing its overall total to 84 FTEs. And with that, I will now turn it over to Metro Water.
Thank you, Austin. I feel like he covered it, don't we think? Yeah, thank you for this opportunity this afternoon. I do want, is that okay? Okay. I do want to introduce who's sitting here next to me, Tom Godfrey. He's the chair of the, the board of the Metropolitan Water District of Salt Lake and Sandy. He's also the president of the Provo River Water Users Association. And Metro is the majority shareholder in that association. And he's also a member of Salt Lake City's Public Utilities Advisory Committee. I also want to recognize our other Salt Lake City trustees. We have Cindy Cromer and Pat Camerel. And also Laura Breyfer, who we work closely with as the director for Salt Lake City Public Utilities. Next slide. So my purpose here today is to provide a quick overview with the Metropolitan Water District of Salt Lake and Sandy. And then I'll go into a high level of our tentative budget, which will focus on what are our sources of funds and how we use those funds. Next slide. So the Metropolitan Water District of Salt Lake and Sandy is a special district, or local district, I should say, that was established in 1935 to provide long-term drinking water supplies for Salt Lake City. Sandy City annexed into the district in 1990. And Metro Water was created in the midst of a worst drought on record. And Metro was selected to be the local sponsor of the Aqueduct Division of the Provo River Project, which is a Bureau of Reclamation project. And the Aqueduct Division connect, included construction of the Salt Lake Aqueduct, which is a 42-mile pipeline, mostly reinforced concrete pipe that runs from Deer Creek Dam and Provo Canyon to 33rd South and I-215 and Mill Creek. Construction of the Aqueduct was completed in 1951, and it still serves today the Salt Lake Valley. Next slide. So as mentioned, our board members are appointed by the councils. This council appoints five of our seven trustees. And the trustees serve four-year terms that can be renewed. And I just wanted to mention that our trustees provide a wealth of knowledge and experience to Metro. And I am incredibly grateful for their service on our board. Next slide. So Metro's water supply is diverse, which really supports a reliable water supply for Salt Lake City. The bulk of our water is through the Provo River Project, and this water is stored in Deer Creek Reservoir. Metro's supply also includes Little Cottonwood Creek water. The 20, the potential water can reach 20,000 acre feet, and it's a combination of Salt Lake City and Sandy's water rights. And then our third largest source of water for Metro is the Central Utah Project. And this water is stored in Jordanell Reservoir. And Metro has a petition of 20,000 acre feet through the Central Utah Project. And then we have other smaller water sources, which includes what we call the Central Utah Project, Utah Lake System Water, which is essentially strawberry reservoir. Salt Lake City has 3,100 acre feet of preferential right of that water. And they started receiving this supply in fiscal year '21. And Metro also sees water from the Ontario Drain Tunnel and Bell Canyon. So a total combined of 108,700 acre feet. Next slide. So when I think about our infrastructure, there's three main components. We need to have a treatment facility, a conveyance, and then a storage. So for Metro, we own and operate the Little Cottonwood Water Treatment Plant, which is located in Cottonwood Heights. That plant was originally constructed, constructed and commissioned in 1960. It was later expanded in, in 2007 to be 150 million gallon treatment plant. We also own and operate the Point of the Mountain Treatment Plant, which is located in Draper. That plant was constructed and commissioned in 2007. And it helps with flow demands and provides redundancy for the Little Cottonwood Water Treatment Plant. And then third, we also are 2/7 owner of the Jordan Valley Water Treatment Plant, which is located in Bluffdale. That plant is 150 million gallons, which is currently being, excuse me, 180, that is being expanded to 250. And that plant helps us deliver water to the north quadrant of Salt Lake City. And then as far as conveyance, those are our pipes. So we have the Salt Lake Aqueduct, which I just talked about. We have a Point of the Mountain Aqueduct, which connects our Point of the Mountain Water Treatment Plant in Draper with our treatment plant in Cottonwood Heights. And then we also are 2/7 owners of the Jordan Aqueduct, which provides water again to Salt Lake City at 24th South. And then we have water storage. So we have Terminal Reservoir, which is the one located in Mill Creek that we rebuilt. It has, let's see. Yeah, it provides, with the rebuild, it addressed seismic concerns and provides water storage for fire suppression as well. And then the Jordan Aqueduct Terminal Reservoir, where we have 2/7 owners, is 100 million gallon storage reservoir. And it's located in Taylorsville. Next slide. So that's just a quick overview of Metro. We have a lot of infrastructure in the state that we maintain and operate. And so we do have two main ways that we are, we have two sources of funds. Excuse me. Next slide. So this is from our executive summary of our fiscal year '26 budget. So 24% of our revenue in this year's budget is from water cells, and that's to mainly Salt Lake City and Sandy City. We do some surplus cells to other entities upon, with, only on a surplus basis. We have revenue of 20% from property tax. Then we have capital assessments, and that's about 12% of our revenue. And this is for repayment of any projects where we improve the capacity of our facilities. And so there is a repayment schedule for Salt Lake City and Sandy City. We have 17% of our revenue this year, and it's under miscellaneous. And I just wanted to point out that a portion of that is a reimbursement. So part of the Cottonwoods Connection Project, Salt Lake City is funding one of the pipelines that starts at Big Cottonwood Water Treatment Plant and goes down Fort Union Boulevard. And then we anticipate bonding in the coming year for projects, and that would be another 27% of our revenue, which would get us to the $111 million. Next slide. As Austin noted, we are proposing a 5% increase to the water rate to both of our member cities. So for Salt Lake City specifically, that's a net increase of $881,761. Let's see. Okay, next slide. So also, as Austin noted, we are not proposing an increase to our certified tax rate. The tax revenue in our budget is based on the projected certified tax rate of 00035 with some moderate growth. As you'll recall, last year, we came to Salt Lake City to increase our certified tax rate to 00035. And just as a point of reference, Metro's maximum taxable rate is 00035, excuse me, 0005. And we are doing a future evaluation of either an increase or reestablishment of the certified tax rate in fiscal year '28. We do see a need for additional revenue as we embark on the rebuild of the Little Cottonwood Water Treatment Plant and other key infrastructure costs. Next slide. So in fiscal year '26, we anticipate bonding for approximately $37 million. Those costs are looking at a three-year span, specifically related to the Little Cottonwood Conduct Creek Intake and Replacement Project, which is estimated just over $10 million. We'll be finishing Cottonwoods Connection Reach One, and also what we're calling a Phase Three Light. That's about a $12 million project. And then the design of the Little Cottonwood Water Treatment Plant that rebuilt, which will be $14 million. Next slide. Okay, so now we have those revenue sources. How do we plan to... But what are the costs that we're associating with those? So, next slide, please. So our total budgeted expenditures are $111, $111.4 million. This budget includes more than $27 million for routine non-capacity projects, with a significant portion for the Cottonwoods Connection Project. The O&amp;M budget totals $40.5 million. This doesn't include interest, depreciation, and amortization, and also includes any non-routine O&amp;M costs. It also includes all of our costs from the Provo River Water Users Association and Salt Lake City's portion of the Cottonwoods Connection Project. So the overall O&amp;M portion, if we take out that reimbursement from Salt Lake City, it does represent a 9.5% increase. And as noted in the intro, a lot of those relate to significant increases in our gas and power costs for operations. We are proposing additional personnel for workload and succession planning. Okay, next slide. So some of the key components of our O&amp;M budget I'd like to point out. We have our salary and wages, where we are proposing a 4% merit increase for our staff, as well as additional staff members. We have a significant increase in contract services, as well as utilities. Employee benefits, I think, like most of us, there's a moderate increase as far as our medical insurance and other dental. And then in the center is the Provo River Water Users Association, so that 2.16% relates to our costs with the association. Specifically, they are currently involved in the Deer Creek Intake Project, which is a $100 million project. I think will be completed in two to three years, is my understanding. And so Metro has a majority, where we're the majority shareholder, a lot of those costs are passed on to Metro. Next slide. So as mentioned, this budget includes more than $27 million for what we call non-routine, routine non-capacity. So it's our current infrastructure that we need to either address. So it's not expanding the amount of water we can treat, but just addressing our current. And the first one, the Salt Lake Aqueduct Replacement Reach One, the $24 million, is related to the Cottonwoods Connection Project. This project is required to address aging infrastructure of the Salt Lake Aqueduct, really to ensure seismic and elements of resiliency. This pipeline will, when complete, connect to the Big Cottonwood Water Treatment Plant, which is a Salt Lake City utility, with the Little Cottonwood Water Treatment Plant, which is a Metro facility. Next slide. And then this slide goes over our costs from other agencies. So as I mentioned, we have a diverse water portfolio, which is really important. One of those, however, it comes with a cost. So one of those is from the Central Utah Water Conservancy District. Our total annual cost from that entity is about $5.5 million, and that's related to the petition of 20,000 acre feet in the Central Utah Project. We also have 3,100 acre feet of the ULS, which is that Strawberry Reservoir water. And then we also have costs from Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. Their O&amp;M had moderate increases of 3.8%, as well as they have capital projects of $2.8 million. And where we're 2/7 owners of those Jordan Aqueduct facilities, so the Aqueduct, the treatment plant, and the reservoir, any of their costs, we pay a portion of that. And then, as I mentioned, the Provo River Water Users Association, our annual cost to them in fiscal year '26 is approximately $4.8 million, and a lot of that is related to the Deer Creek Intake Project. And then finally, Metro is also a member of the Utah Lake Water Users Association. And along the Jordan River, there's a structure called the Turner Diversion, and they're having to do significant repairs this year. And so Metro's portion is $482,600. And that was my last slide. So are there any questions? You can go to the next one, that I can answer from the council.
Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you very much, and thanks for all the work across the board with public utilities, our public utilities. And the question is on the bonding. So we had a property increase, tax increase, last year. We don't see one this year. And then the future years with this additional bond that you have for '26, for $37 million? Or is there another bond later on in '28 or '29, were you mentioning? Or did I miss it? And would we see a property tax increase for those bonds also?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the bond is specific... Maybe I should back up. So we, these projects are so expensive, we need multiple revenue sources. And so the property tax that we increased last year generated approximately $10 million additional revenue that we've been using for these projects, the Deer Creek Intake Project and the Cottonwoods Connection, in addition to our water cells and other sources. And we bonded for the project as well. We issued a $55 million loan last year, or bond, I should say. So we're just looking forward to, like I mentioned, the finishing this project and then the start of the rebuild, the Little Cottonwood Water Treatment Plant. And so with those, we're going to see the need for bonding and additional property tax revenue, as well as water sales revenue. Did I answer all your questions? So the third year, we'll do, are proposing another either reestablishment of the property tax rate, because it erodes, or a possible increase higher than 00035?
Okay, so we could see a possible property tax increase in a couple of years, maybe just one or two smaller ones in the future years. And with the, if we start reducing our buying from water from you, how does that also affect the, your revenue side?
If Salt Lake were to buy less water from us?
Yeah, because we're just conserving less water, or serving more water. How does that affect the property tax revenue side?
So currently, we have, our water rate is set up on a fixed amount for the city. So they can, they have, depending on the demand, right? They may take more from us one year and less, and it's the same amount every year. So it doesn't, it definitely impacts Laura and her utilities, because when they use less water, right, for their budget. For us, we try to provide some stability for the city, so they know, okay, this is how much Metro is going to be charging us this year. And we do communicate with them, like what our expenses are, and we coordinate monthly, so it's not a surprise by any means.
Yeah, I apologize for the, I probably asked you similar questions last year, and I just need to have to ask them every year.
Oh, it's good. It's good to make the answer though, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Young.
Thank you. So I'm going to, I guess, ask a question by drawing a comparison. So one of the things that I see is that Metro has a need for upgrading historical infrastructure that just has met its end of life. That sounds very similar to the conversation that we're having in Salt Lake City as well. And I think one of the things that's challenging is a lot of that water infrastructure isn't visible. When you see a road deteriorate, you know, because you're hitting potholes. It's super clear, like this road needs to be replaced. When I turn on the water, you know, to whether brush my teeth or wash my dishes, I don't necessarily see that infrastructure in terms of being able to have a sense of, wow, that looks really old, and could fail if we don't do something proactively to be able to address it. So from a large-scale sense, as we continue to see costs increasing across this landscape, can you just comment on whether or not that is an accurate reflection of kind of our current needs? I'd just love to hear your thoughts.
No, that's a great, that's a spot-on perspective, council member. So, and typically, that's how we want to be, right, is under the radar. We want people to just know that water is always available for all, because it is a critical water resource, right, for living. However, as Salt Lake City and Metro are experiencing, this is infrastructure that's been in place for a very long time. And we've, I feel like both of our entities have done a fantastic job of maintaining those and extending their life. But at some point, like currently, we just have concrete that does not meet current seismic standards. And so we're trying to get ahead of that, because in the event of an emergency, it's not something we can repair very quickly, especially losing a treatment plant. And so that's where we're planning now to address those, so that they are resilient. I think one of the key concerns about any city is that if you don't have water, people will leave the city. And so we just want to make sure that we are always reliable. And, and we, the treatment plants, you can kind of see, but to your point, miles and miles of water infrastructure that's buried in streets and roads no one really knows about unless there's a good leak, right? And that's when you don't want to be known. So, yeah, it's a challenge, because we don't want to, we want to be unseen, but there are things that we do need to address.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that I'll also call out, because I've had a chance to hear it in various meetings, but may just not be on the broader radar, is that we are making plans to be proactive in this space, not reactive, and that that actually saves us money. And so that there is this broader conversation about the economic pressures that everyone is under right now, you know, whether you live in Salt Lake City, Cottonwood, or Sandy. And that, you know, for a lot of those reasons, every single dollar makes sense. But that by deciding to put funding towards these projects in the incremental and longevity way that has been planned for, saves us money as opposed to having to really, you know, drop everything and cut city services across the board to be able to respond to an emergency. And so I appreciate that approach, and just wanted to make sure that that was part of the conversation for the public to hear.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pully.
Thank you. Every time that we get this presentation, I'm very excited to hear about the major projects that the agency is embarking on and working towards to ensure that we are resilient with something, one of the most precious things we have, which is our water. I have a few questions regarding, you know, those projects and if the agency is thinking about the uncertainty that we are seeing in the country, and how it could impact some of the costs of the materials, you know, that you're going to need for, to meet those projects. And if so, are you setting aside some money? Or you anticipate that you may need more funding if there is a substantial increase in cost of steel or other main materials, which connects to your plan to bond for next year, to bond next year for major upgrades and for $37 million? And is that budget accounting for some wiggle room in there, considering the markets and the instability that we're seeing? So that's one of the questions, it was a long question. And the second question relates to conservancy districts and the charges that they bill, your agency. Are there conservancy districts that are significantly more expensive than others on what they bill you? I know that they, there are different things that we are, they're offering. But for the same services, are they, are there some districts that are more expensive than others? I am a little curious about those two things.
Okay. Yeah, those are great questions as well, thank you. So for the Cottonwoods Connection Project, that contract amount has, I feel like there's some stability there, because it's been executed. Pipe has been pre-purchased before the project. In fact, it was more than a year ago, we signed a contract with the pipe provider so that we could have it in place, for the contractor. So hopefully, those issues, I mean, there still could be some. But I feel like with that project, I don't, hopefully, it doesn't escalate very much, because we did a lot of pre-planning and trying to get the pipeline ordered before. Of course, we didn't know what was going to happen, but it was more just, we wanted to have the pipe ready, because there was such a short time to get the project completed. For the rebuild, that is one of my concerns. I mean, we're, that bonding is for the design, so no construction. But when we're thinking about the cost to rebuild it, knowing of these things, I do feel like we're probably, don't have enough in our budget, right, to do the rebuild. And right now, we're just, we have an amount in there, because that balances. But if it becomes more than that, then we are going to have to look at, are there some projects we can push out, that we can sacrifice, right, for a later time? And really just looking at what is the appetite that the public can even afford? Because there's all these big projects, and being sensitive to that. It's one of our values to be financially responsible with these entrusted funds. We recognize that these are your constituents, right? It's their water rates, it's their property tax dollars. And so we're doing all that we can to stretch those dollars and be very conscious that there's probably a limit, right, for people, and we're going to have to make some tough decisions. Hopefully, we can make it work, at least for the rebuild, because that is a structural facility that we do need to re- facility that we do need to replace. As Salt Lake is doing, like with City Creek and some of their others, so definitely things that keep me up at night, Councilmember. Your other question, as far as costs from other agencies, I feel like with Jordan Valley, where we're co-owners in that facilities, we do have, there's a group of five of us that vote on all their projects, and so we do have influence on that entity as far as how they spend money. Their facilities are a little bit newer than ours, but, you know, they also have a lot of growth that they're meeting, and we don't have to necessarily pay for the growth, but if they're making improvements to their processes and then just the operations of, and maintenance of it, we're paying our, our share. With the Central Utah Water Conservancy District, we don't have any, we aren't a member of their board, we don't have any, we're just a petitioner for that Central Utah project. And so I feel like what we paid for the water is probably fair, but it's all the O and M costs that they're managing with their facilities. They're, they cover a lot of counties, they have a lot of pipelines that they're maintaining or constructing, and so those are the costs, as a board, I think I can speak for Tom, that we're concerned about, right? Like, when is it, you know, these, every year increases, is there, is there a cap? Are we going to reach with them? So I think out of the two, I feel like we have more input on Jordan Valley's costs than Central Utah's.
Thank you.
Can you, you talked about a, an infrastructure, or sorry, an increase to the wages. How long ago did you do an increase like that to your employees? Or how many years has it been?
We've, we've done those annually.
Okay. And then, this is a question that I ask a lot during budget season, just in hopes that, of educating more folks, but can you talk about, so taxpayers who are saying, you know, we're paying our rates every year, and we're, and this, you know, the city is growing, the, the Metro Water District is growing, the, Utah is growing, so why doesn't that pay for all of the infrastructure? Why do we have to adjust the rate and increase the rate? Why doesn't the growth just pay for it? Can you talk about that a little bit?
That's a good question. You may have stumped me a little bit.
Is it like, maybe the pacing of some of the facilities that are retiring, or, or reaching the ends of their life? Or is it building out the, like, new infrastructure?
So I would say that, are you saying, why are our costs increasing?
Well, just like, I, I think people would say, yeah, I understand that you have to build new things, and that, that infrastructure's old, but like, there are all these new people that are paying their rates, so how come that doesn't cover it?
So for us, it's, I don't know about like, per capita, like how many, I know our service area, I don't know that, I don't know, Flora, if you have an answer to that one, but, Tom. I think in general, we have escalating costs as far as like, the chemicals to treat the water. So, in fact, we just had a report today that people are, we are growing, but we're using the same amount of water. So we have more population, but we're using the same amount of water.
Okay.
So, so I think our costs are just more along with disinflation, as far as the cost to pay for the chemicals to treat, to add to the water, the, the, just staffing. We have more infrastructure now to manage, so we're needing a few more maintenance staff as far as we're bringing new facilities online, and then new pipeline to also, that, that whole maintenance of a new pipeline, a new infrastructure, and then just the cost of doing contracts with, with consulting firms, just those increases that they're passing on to us.
Yeah, I think that, that definitely helps. Sorry, I didn't mean to stump you.
I'm sorry.
No, I didn't mean to stump you, but I, I think that helps explain that just because more people are moving here, and doesn't mean that that growth rate is the same as the growth in need of the budget, is kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, because people are practicing conservation, and so we are definitely noticing that.
Yeah.
And then, I guess the other challenge for us is that Sandy City feels like they're kind of built out. I don't know that they're experiencing as much growth as Salt Lake City is, and so we kind of have the mix from the two cities, where they feel like, I mean, I still think a golf course could become an apartment complex. I try to tell them that, but I, you know, they're not seeing as many open spaces, or new apartments, or like, the growth that you have in the Northwest, potential growth in the Northwest quadrant.
Yeah, I think that helps explain it, too.
And I think that will, yeah, as that, Salt Lake City experiences more growth, we'll see, I, I would imagine a higher demand as well, at least for in, indoor water use, hopefully, not outdoor.
And I would say, too, that the rate payers are really paying Salt Lake City. And for what we have to do, it's, it's the assessments, the taxes, you know, and our annual water rates. That's what we have to work with. And then, in that, we have to replace all this infrastructure, I think, as Councilmember Young mentioned, you know, this is what we've got to do. And we have, we're pretty old, and we haven't had to do that yet. I mean, our guys go through these pipes, I'm sure none of them are claustrophobic, but they go through these pipes and check it, and we're in pretty good shape. But we are finding that there are places that we have to replace things.
Mr. Chair, I, this is one of the, when talking about taxes and rates, many, many of our neighbors believe that, because we're talking about percentages, that the, the added value to our, the assessed value of our properties means that the, these entities, including our municipal government, gets more money. Every time that we assess our properties, they get assessed a higher value. But the truth is that, much like this entity in front of us and our municipal government, we said, we propose a budget, we pass a budget, and ultimately, that's the budget that is going to be funded. And if our assessed value meets that, they're, they're not getting more money, we're not getting more money every year, and that's why there are adjustments to those rates to meet the budgets that this organization and our municipal government passes. So it is a common misconception about how taxes work, in the state of Utah at least, and it's certainly important to remind everybody that how all of this works. But ultimately, we, we are in an area that has infrastructure that is 100 years old in some cases, that needs to be resilient to, to every, anything that comes our way, including earthquakes and horrible things like that, that we prefer to have water. And it is a struggle for our neighbors to, to make a case about funding, and, and saying we have to put a little more money into it. But I appreciate the transparency and the effort that your, your entity is doing to make sure that we have water every time, and I, I think those are worth investments. So thank you for being here today.
Yeah, thank you so much. I think, too, that the generational investments that you talked about earlier may relate to that here, too, so.
Thanks for your great questions, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is tentative break, and we are on time, so we get to take the full 20 minutes.
Break. We're on agenda item number seven, which is budget amendment number five for FY 2024, 2025 follow-up discussion. And for this, we have our own Jennifer Bruno, Council Executive Director, and then we also have Sylvia Richards, Mary Beth Thompson, Ben Ludke, and Greg Cleary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for a procedural standpoint, there's a follow-up public hearing tonight because we had a noticing issue for the last public hearing. So the council has the option to adopt items on budget amendment number five tonight or defer action to a future meeting. Staff has prepared a motion sheet at the request of a council member with two items separated out. Item I two, which is the contribution to the Mead Avenue underpass project, and item I three, which is a contribution to art in District Four. So staff has separated out those motions for council consideration, either to vote on them tonight or defer them to a future meeting. We've provided some information to the council via email. If you check your email, based on feedback from the city attorney about a draft term sheet that could be considered if you would like to proceed with item I three, the art in District Four. It would set out some of the parameters by which the funds would be contributed to that project, just so that the city has guarantees about how those funds are being used. Additionally, the attorney's office has provided some guidance if council members were interested in contributing to public art, art that's owned by the public eventually, or art that's owned privately eventually. And so we're happy to have further conversations about on that if the council's interested. But other than that, there weren't really any other follow-up items. So if you had any questions, I'll defer to you guys. Otherwise, just look for that motion sheet to close the public hearing tonight and consider action.
Thank you. Any questions about these, about this item? Okay. I'll just say I'd ask for them to be held out for two reasons. Number one, I feel like this is, these items are tied to our communications policy discussion that we started at our last meeting, weren't able to finish, and because of this agenda item issues, we weren't able to have that today. And so I want to finish having that discussion before we move forward. But also ultimately, while I think that these two projects are, like, have a lot of merit, and I might support them through other means, like through the CRA or through Arts Council or whatever, that I personally don't feel like these fit within the communications budget, and so I don't see myself supporting that. But I also want to have the rest of the discussion at our next meeting.
Break. We're on agenda item number seven, which is budget amendment number five for FY 2024, 2025 follow-up discussion. And for this, we have our own Jennifer Bruno, Council Executive Director, and then we also have Sylvia Richards, Mary Beth Thompson, Ben Ludke, and Greg Cleary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for a procedural standpoint, there's a follow-up public hearing tonight because we had a noticing issue for the last public hearing. So the council has the option to adopt items on budget amendment number five tonight or defer action to a future meeting. Staff has prepared a motion sheet at the request of a council member with two items separated out. Item I two, which is the contribution to the Mead Avenue Underpass project, and item I three, which is a contribution to art in District Four. So staff has separated out those motions for council consideration, either to vote on them tonight or defer them to a future meeting. We've provided some information to the council via email. If you check your email, based on feedback from the city attorney about a draft term sheet that could be considered if you would like to proceed with item I three, the art in District Four. It would set out some of the parameters by which the funds would be contributed to that project, just so that the city has guarantees about how those funds are being used. Additionally, the attorney's office has provided some guidance if council members were interested in contributing to public art, art that's owned by the public eventually, or art that's owned privately eventually. And so we're happy to have further conversations about on that if the council's interested. But other than that, there weren't really any other follow-up items. So if you had any questions, I'll defer to you guys. Otherwise, just look for that motion sheet to close the public hearing tonight and consider action.
Thank you. Any questions about these, about this item? Okay. I'll just say I'd ask for them to be out, held out for two reasons. Number one, I feel like this is, these items are tied to our communications policy discussion that we started at our last meeting, weren't able to finish, and because of this agenda item issues, we weren't able to have that today. And so I want to finish having that discussion before we move forward. But also ultimately, while I think that these two projects are, like, have a lot of merit, and I might support them through other means, like through the CRA, or through Arts Council, or whatever, that I personally don't feel like these fit within the communications budget, and so I don't see myself supporting that. But I also want to have the rest of the discussion at our next meeting, and just put, let people know that I'm open to finding other ways to fund these kinds of things, not through the comms budget. Does anyone else have any other thoughts they want to share, questions about other items? Yeah, the comms budget is on the agenda for next week. So we would move, we can move forward with the other budget items, hold on these two, and then have a discussion, or make a decision after, if that's how a majority of the council wants to move forward. But that's what I would propose. Okay? Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the context there. I would like to thank the council staff for helping us maneuver through this, this policy, internal policy, and trying to understand what the best processes are for, you know, that we owe the taxpayers and our community. And I, you know, creating this, this policy and refining it to make sure that we are accountable to how we reach to our neighbors. So I appreciate this discussion. I'm looking forward to that next, next time.
Okay. Then I think we're good on that item. Unless, did you, did you all have any updates for us? Okay, great. Thank you. Agenda item number eight is our informal discussion, the Legislative Committee. So, Legislative Subcommittee, excuse me. So, Nick?
So this is a discussion on the council's policy manual regarding the Legislative Subcommittee Membership, and the membership on the Utah League of Cities and Towns Legislative Policy Committee. So these are two ways that council members help provide guidance and direction on the city's policy when it comes to legislative affairs. That first one being the Legislative Subcommittee. There's been different, over the years, there's been different makeups of that, who participates on it. And it got to the point where the council, the director of the chair and vice chair, they asked for us to come back, talk about it with the council, give you all an update of who's on it now, and then provide some potential options of potential changes, if you would like to formalize those changes. And then the same thing with the Legislative Policy Committee. There are four people within the city who can serve on the Utah League of Cities and Towns Legislative Policy Committee. I'll just say LPC from now on, if that's okay with everybody. Right now, every city in town within the state can have up to three representatives. But if you are a board member serving on the ULCT Board, the city will have a fourth seat. So at this point, Councilmember Dugan is on the board, so he has a seat. The other ones are, the mayor's office has one, the council office, which is Councilmember Petro, or has been to this point, and then Legislative Affairs Division has a representative. So there's also the discussion about if you still like how the council chooses who serves on the LPC, and ways to consider that more often, more regularly.
Sorry, just to jump in and clarify, I think there's a distinction about being a member, a voting member, versus being able to attend LPC. Any council member can attend LPC, their public meetings, but in terms of voting, the council has one vote. So I think that's, except for obviously a board member, so.
So in terms of the Legislative Subcommittee, the current makeup is the, or it serves a calendar year, so December, or excuse me, January through December, the current membership is the chair, the CRA chair, and then the immediate past chair. And the immediate past chair is there to help provide some continuity between legislative sessions. Options that have been tried in the past, and that the council could consider again, are doing, sticking with that calendar year, and doing the chair, and the vice chair, and the CRA chair. Another option would be to alter that a little bit, which the council did in the past with some success, where January through March, it's the council and the CRA chairs, and the immediate past chair, and then starting in April, in anticipation of preparing for the upcoming session, the vice chair starts to serve instead of the immediate past chair. One difficulty with that is, the vice chair is not always guaranteed to become the next chair. That has happened in the past. So those are just some of those options that you could consider. Any questions, or do you, would you all like to discuss that?
The discussion I have, just coming, being a board member on the league, and being, you know, a voting member on the league, but not being, participating in the, our Subcommittee Meetings, you're kind of like in a weird spot there. I was, this past year, of course, I, because my momo, Mono was out, so I kind of sat in during those meetings, which helped get, bring that continuity there. So my question is, or a thought is that, there's a continuity there by having a league member on the subcommittee, because they're there for a couple of years. Your term is a few years, so it's not just one term. And you can get multiple terms, but usually it's just a couple of years. Is there a thought of having that person, if he's not the chair, or the vice chair, or the RDA chair, CRA chair, being on that Subcommittee, so that keeps that continuity? I'm not saying that's, you know, I'm looking at the future, not the past here, but it seems like that would be a possible alternative. So there is that continuity. Vice the former, or the past chair, and we're not, and the upcoming chair is not always the vice chair, there's still six other candidates for that position. So that also, I don't think we should base our thought on that person immediately stepping into the chair position. And I'm just throwing that out, because it just seemed, it was kind of odd for me, like, oh, I don't sit in on those meetings, but two days later, or the day, next day, I'm going to be at the other meeting, and I'm not really sure what's happened at that discussion.
And this year, it felt like there was some success in you meeting with Angela Price.
Yes, and I continue to do that now. Yeah, we have, we have a standing meeting.
In past, it has been very helpful to have that, when someone doesn't have that board, to be on the LPC.
So I do, do you see that, some of that continuity, but I don't have that continuity of all the continuous discussion. I'm looking at the future too, when it's not me.
Yes, Councilmember Mono.
There's no guarantee that Salt Lake City always has a member on the board, right?
And there's no guarantee of that either. That's true also.
So, and there's no guarantee that the immediate past chair is still on the council, nor is there a guarantee that the vice chair becomes the next chair. So I think that having a set, these are the people that are always on the Legislative Subcommittee, because X, Y, and Z will always happen, is just never going to be possible. So, just a suggestion, but maybe it's just something that we vote on every year, like we do chair, vice chair of the council and the city, and we just say, these are the people, like, in addition to that, these are the people that, in that same time that we decide those things, these are the people that will be on the Legislative Subcommittee. And it's based on whether you're on a board, a league board, or you're, you have special relationships with specific legislators that would be helpful to whatever we're going through that year. It might just be something that we have to do case by case, but I don't know if that makes it way too complicated for staff to manage.
I do, I want to amplify that, especially because there are just some work schedules too, that make it, I mean, we shouldn't be penalizing us for not being able to be at the Legislative Subcommittee lunch, if that's not something that works for you. The one that seems like we need though, it needs to be chair or chairs designee, since press goes through chair, and those sorts of things. So I actually think this is a case for us unifying our leadership structure more firmly, so that we have one chair over all the things that we do. But I, that's the one position that I think should be there, it should be chair or chairs designee. If, you know, the year you were chair, you just don't really love the legislative stuff, so you delegated it to me, and that was a fine arrangement for us.
Yes, Councilmember Plouffe.
You know, just because of the uncertainty, I felt like I used that word too many times today, the, you know, about the chair, you know, not continuing on the council, or not becoming chair, or, you know, all of this, you know, the league seat not being there in the future, I mean, the goal of these unknowns. It falls to me that it should be standardized like this, but with a caveat, that maybe at the beginning of the year, you know, we, we add, you know, maybe, you know, a designee, or, or, you know, an alternate position, just, just to make sure that there is no confusion on who is supposed to be the voice of this body in this very moving, very fast-paced meetings. And it creates, you know, conflict that we, you know, we want to prevent. So I like the standardization, but I also acknowledge that maybe some council members may not want to, and they are in these positions of power, or, you know, there may be a conflict of some sort of schedules and whatnot, and they could potentially delegate it. But it needs to happen very clearly, maybe at the beginning of the year. And then that sort of is the process that we follow, which I think it may be the merge of the two ideas here on the table, is following this suggestion, and then adding maybe an alternative position.
Yeah, I, the more that I, more consideration that I've given to it, the more I thought maybe it should be that we select either the immediate past or the vice, but that there also is like sort of an alternate path, I guess. Because somebody also might want to serve as vice chair, and have no intention, you know, of ever even seeking the chair position. So, so, I don't know, but, and to our earlier discussions that we had back during the retreat and last fall, you know, maybe this is also another opportunity to, for someone that isn't in leadership, to have, to be involved. You know, maybe you don't have an interest in being in leadership, but you do have an interest in, in being on the ledge committee. So, but either way, we need to make a decision, so that we can have more clarity going forward. So if everybody, I don't know if we want to, everybody wants to say kind of where you're feeling right now, or what your thoughts are right now, but we need to start moving in a direction.
I'll start, since I'm on the far left.
Great.
I think, after this kind of discussion, I think the chairs, in this case, should be on it. And the third person could be, we would pick as a group, because, you know, again, the league rep, he could be a chair of one of the things.
Yeah.
He could, it also may behoove us at some point, that we want four voices. He's there, he, the person is there in the, at the LPC, he's voting there, and he's already getting the information through, for, through our legislative group. So that could be the, and that third person could be someone outside of that leadership position. So make that always a, the January decision, whereas, because just the chair and the vice chair, the chairs are also going to be a January decision, when we vote every year for those, for those two positions. So we're going to vote for those two positions, and we vote for the third position for the LPC. And that could be one of the other five members of the board, of the council.
The one thing I want to add, and this is not, this is not shaming, this is just, I think, where I've noticed efficiency. If you're going to be on LPC, you show up.
Yeah.
There's a, there needs to be a strong preference for in-person. The communality we saw, and the support we saw this session, I think, is do so much to you, Councilmember Dugan, and how deep you've gone with so many people there, how much respect you've cultivated, so that when we raise the flag, and Angela, and so when you all raise the flag and say, we need help, the league is so much less skeptical because of the presence. And so I think, no matter what, more, more aligned than it's, you know, this is my title, or this is my leadership rotation, or anything, we really need to be consulting with making sure that we are good to our word. The Legislative Subcommittee, because it's internal, I think there's a little more leeway, you know, if you have to call in versus show up in person. But I think for that LPC position in particular, we need to be there and be good to our word, because we will eventually ask them for a lot, if future legislative sessions are anything like this one.
Okay. There are two council members we haven't heard from. Where are you, how are you feeling?
I mean, not a surprise to anyone here, but I like a good policy and plan. And I do, I mean, I, I just think that it kind of helps create the framework in which we're operating. And it's not to say that it binds our hands, like, we obviously have the ability as a shared council to change the policy, but I do think that it provides clarity to, like, what people can expect. I also think it provides clarity that if you are putting your name forward for a member of leadership of this council, that you understand that that is also part of what you're committing to. And that we have just kind of a, you know, agreement that that is part of the process. So then individuals can vet their ability to meet those requirements when considering whether or not that makes sense to them. So, you know, I, I support moving forward with, you know, the, the plan is proposed, and giving it a go, to see if we run into any unintended consequences, and that if we do, we address it then.
Councilmember Lopez Chavez? No? Okay.
I mean, Mr. Chair, maybe, maybe this is the, you know, the position of Councilmember Young, that, you know, we, we have the power to amend this, and to change it as needed. But I think for the sake of policy setting, a standardization, that we stick to the plan, knowing so that if any of these things don't happen, or we are not able to attend, and attend in person to some of those important meetings, that, that we, that we can maybe amend this, this policy in a given year. But it has to be done in public, and, you know, they're all, we're on the same page of who is attending this. So I would like to support the, you know, the propose. I think it keeps some continuing, continuation of leadership and knowledge. It's a good, new system that we're trying, so I'm excited to see how it works.
There's, there's actually two proposals. There's one and two, so.
That's what I was confused about.
I was just talking about the, the chair, CRA chair, and the passing media chair, and then the vice chair after the session.
So number two.
Oh, okay.
The number two, the interim period to next session?
But I feel like I heard Councilmember Mono suggest a third option.
We don't have to consider my option. I was just saying that there are, these are all going to be different, but it sounds like, what I heard from Councilmember Young, is that we want a base policy that we can then go and make adjustments to as those things come up. But we can.
So do we want to say, like, do we want to say something in the policy that says, this is what the policy is, but?
The preferred one.
Like, this is the default, unless the council votes otherwise?
Yeah, and we could include it so that, the beginning of every year, like, when you vote on the chair and vice chair, this could be another one of the votes, follows it immediately.
Just like confirm that we're going to follow the default?
So I just want, I thought I heard from Councilmember Dugan, maybe I'm wrong, chair, the two chairs, the chair of the council and the CRA, and then another one to serve on LPC as well. Is that what you said?
I feel like Dugan was saying what, kind of what Darren was saying, that, that it should be the two chairs, and then the third one should be open, and we vote on it every year.
Yeah.
And some years, we say, oh, we have the continuity of, we have an LPC board member, so let's, that, that's our continuity. And then other years, we're like, oh, no, it's the past chair, there, there have been more continuity, and we don't have an LPC vote this year. So, so my, so I'm kind of leaning towards saying that, that, like, unless otherwise specified, that it is the immediate past chair through the session, then the vice chair, but that the council can vote to put any third, you know, instead, we can choose a third option. And then if people are interested in that option, you know, they can say so when we start having leadership discussions every year. Or I would also just be in favor of Darren's proposal. The only downfall I see with that is that, you know, it's potential that you could have a whole new slate of Subcommittee members with no continuity. But in that instance, we would be voting on that, we would be, we would be affirmatively voting on that, when we vote for the chair, when we vote for the vice chair, and when we vote for ledge Subcommittee chair. So I feel like that's not going to happen by accident, like, we're going to notice. So that's where I am. I'm at, I'm at like a modified two, or a proposal three.
Nick, can you repeat that?
I hope so.
Yeah.
I really hope so. So I am hearing, from December, from January through March, from December, from January through March, the immediate past chair and then the two chairs, the CRA and the council chair. And then starting in April through the end of December, the immediate past chair will ride off into the sunset. And then you will, the council will pick who that next person would be. It will be open to anybody at the time.
No.
Okay.
Close, very close.
So the third seat is?
I was saying that, that the modification to two would be exactly as you have it here. But it would basically be like, there's a presumption that we do the past chair and the vice chair switch, but that we could,
To like default to one?
Default to that, unless we vote otherwise, or Darren's proposal.
So default number two. And Councilmember Mono, what is your proposal?
It was just anarchy.
Anarchy?
It was just vote at the beginning of every year.
No, I think it was, it was that it's up for, for, it's up every year, every year we vote.
Which is no policy.
Right. Well, at least.
Which is what we've been doing.
At least with that, we'd actually have to have the vote, whereas right now we kind of just like talk about it and people like ease into what.
So can we merge the two and then just go with option number two? And then every, the beginning of every January, we'll bring it towards, toward, toward the council to say, here's what the names are going to be and you can confirm every January.
Should we, should we do it in January or should we take whatever has been in place from the previous year through March? And then after session vote, like, I don't think installing new people at the beginning of January is a stellar strategy. I think whatever we do the year before should hunker down unless someone terms off or something like that, you know? Because I think continuity, I think, you know, like the rhythm you develop in communicating really does serve during the fast-paced sessions. So that would be my only suggestion for us to consider, do we want to take a vote in January or keep whatever's been in place until after session?
I'm.
Isn't that the option there?
Yeah, I, I kind of really, I really think it's probably, you know, if you're the new chair and in, in both seats, you should be on the, on the committee. And as Councilmember Young said, you should realize that being chairs adds this to your plate. And you need to make sure that you are available to accept that additional responsibility. And that's, and we do that every January. And that is, you know, just a month before the session, but you've also been, you know, been following the previous session and interns. And you may have already been a switcher, so you already have some knowledge there. And the third position goes back to, maybe we do just pick that, we vote on that third position, whether it's a former, former chair. We could do that one until March to add a continuity, because that would get us to it. And then in March, we vote for the third position or it's always just, or we just go with the, the current vice chair. If he wants, if that person wants it.
We're saying the same thing over and over. So chair, CRA chair, an immediate past chair from January to March. And vice chair, March to December. And then the caveat is that we get to decide if we are changing this policy. And that gives us an out if, if someone has a conflict or someone has a preference or non-preference.
Yes.
So wouldn't that be?
Yes, but I think we have, I, I think we have to vote in January about whether or not we're going to follow that or not.
Danny Amendment.
Yeah, because if we wait until after.
And do we need, do we need to vote or in establishing a structure like this, are you implying a designee? So like in the case of the year, Darren was there, Darren was like, I really don't have the bandwidth for it, you're better at it, please you do it. We didn't vote on that, we just did it because we agreed. Are we implying a designee?
Yes.
When we set this up, so then we don't really have to vote, but we do need, we do need to say, hey, in January, if this isn't for you, we need very clearly to communicate to everyone what's going to happen.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's right. We should put in here that it's, the membership is the chair or chair's designee, CRA chair or CRA chair's designee, and then the split unless voted on otherwise in January. Okay. Cool. Is anybody opposed to that? Does anyone have strong feelings against that? Okay, doesn't sound like it. Okay.
Sorry, do you want to dip your toes in the LPC decision?
Let's do it.
So as of right now, there's, yeah, it's Councilmember Petro, but that was, she was there because she'd been involved in the legislative subcommittee for the previous two years. So you could, whatever option you would like, you could choose every January to identify a new voting member of the LPC.
So I'm going to suggest that it is either the chair or the chair's designee, which is basically what we did this year. Like, me and Victoria would talk ahead of time and if I couldn't be there in person, then she would, it would be her. Or that we would, would switch before the meeting or whatever. But I think the default should be the chair is the LPC vote for the council because the chair speaks for the council and, and media and in all the other ways. So it's the chair unless they designate somebody else. Anyone strongly oppose that?
I just want someone who attends.
Yeah.
Like, like I don't, I don't want this to be an ego thing, I don't want this to be, we need to be in the room.
Yeah. I, I agree. Okay. And then what about? Is that it? Okay. Okay. Now, is this adding to, this is going to be added to the council's policy manual?
So we'll write this up and then put it on like a future meeting for you to look at the language, make sure you're comfortable with it. And then it'll be in the, we will update the council policy.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We're on to. We're going to skip to board appointments. So our first board appointment is Ari Tepper.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great.
So Ari, this is, welcome to our meeting. We can't see you, but we can hear you. And this is your time to just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking this position. If you're comfortable sharing which council member district you live in, I always like to know that. And yeah, any other, anything else you want us to know?
Sure, yeah, my name is Ari Tepper. My now fiance and I moved to Salt Lake City in 2022, at the peak of COVID, oh, I'm sorry, 2020, the peak of COVID. Since then, we've been renting in District Five, but have recently purchased a house also in District Five in the Ballpark neighborhood. I have reached out in the past to Councilman Mono about street topology surveys. I've met with him on this topic and a couple of other things and kind of for a little while put off being a little bit more involved. And with my, with our recent house purchase, have decided that it was time to kind of step up my game and, and be a little bit more involved. So I am up for the Transportation Advisory Board for District Five. I'm a mechanical engineer. I have a background in a kind of bunch of different things, but currently actually work at Stadler. The passenger train manufacturer out on, by the airport. I have had a long time interest in kind of public transit, urban planning, all that stuff. So I was just hoping to find a way to be a little more involved in what's happening with the transportation and planning and public transit opportunities that are constantly under development in, in Salt Lake. Probably about the end of my spiel.
Whoops, does anyone have any questions for Ari?
Mr. Chair, this is Councilmember Mono. Ari, good to hear from you again. And it was also a house purchase in the Ballpark neighborhood that immediately preceded me joining the committee council and the redevelopment advisory committee. So who knows where you may be in a few years, but thank you for being willing to serve.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm hoping to continue to grow and be a little bit more involved and see where it takes me.
All right, sorry about that. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you so much, Ari, for your willingness to serve Salt Lake City. We will go ahead and place your name on our consent agenda. And that means that you do not need to be present at our formal meeting tonight, but you are invited and welcome to come. We'd love to have you there, but you don't need to feel obligated to at all.
Okay.
But thank you again for, for being willing to dedicate your time to helping represent the residents of Salt Lake on this committee.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, thanks for your time. Great to meet everyone.
Thanks. Okay.
Okay, bye-bye.
We will move to. Okay, I'm sorry, in advance. See, Kne. Thank you, please come up here. They even spelled it out phonetically, but because I don't know enough about phonetics. I, yeah, so I'm sorry. Okay. So please start by telling us your name.
My name is Cindy Jana Asma Rokanivna. Feel free to call me Cindy for the rest of the time. And I'm here because I applied for the racial equity and policy, policy and commission board.
Yes. All right, tell us a little bit about yourself, what area of the city you're from and why you're interested in serving on this board.
There we go. So I am from Salt Lake City.
You don't have to hold it, you can just.
Oh, just let it go.
Yeah.
These are all new things for me today.
No problem. You'll get used to it. There, you have microphones for your meetings too.
Yes, oh, perfect. So I'm 27 years old. I originally came from Afghanistan. I was a refugee with my mom. I came here when I was two and a half years old. I recently am working for the University of Utah under the Prison Education Department. I specifically work with youth in custody, but along the side, I am a community health worker. So I have assisted a variety of different social determinants of health within the Afghan refugee community alongside other refugee communities. So I believe that being part of this commission would allow me to bring a lot of my expertise, as well as the different strategic partnerships I've built over the years to create a more holistic programming and create a positive impact for the residents here in Salt Lake City, Utah. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other question, any questions? Yes, Councilmember Young.
I just want to say thank you, not just for bringing your unique expertise, but for the work that you do related to our youth in custody or youth in care population. I think that it's definitely one of those programs that if you're aware of, you understand how life-changing it is for the individuals to be able to have access to education so that when they are able to, you know, return, that they have the skills and the credentials necessary to forge a different path in their future. So I just wanted to thank you for your work there. It is, it is not easy work. I'm familiar with it and want to say thanks.
Thank you so much. I think that's all the questions we have. You heard me speak about the formal meeting tonight, so you don't need to be there. And we'll place your name on our consent agenda. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next we have Maxwell Hoagland.
Yes, here I am.
Hello. So Maxwell, now is your time to tell us a little bit about yourself, what area of the city you're from and what your interest is in serving on this particular board.
Yeah, I grew up in the avenues and I have been biking around Salt Lake City for my whole life. Started commuting to high school on my bicycle. And to my work, now I work at a bike shop and build bike around. So it's been 20 years in Salt Lake. I've seen a lot of bike projects come into fruition downtown. I also have a weekly ride that leaves from my bike shop. Bike shop is called Saturday Cycles. It's very focused on bicycle commuting. And so I get input from fellow riders about infrastructure around Salt Lake City. And I'd love to add my voice to the discussion. And yeah, give, give back a little. Oh, and also I now have a one and a half year old child, so that has changed my perspective a whole lot because I take him around on the trailer and safety has completely changed my perspective on safety.
So Maxwell, I have a question. Saturday Cycles used to be like a block away from my house and I thought it closed. Did you just move?
Yes, we moved. We're now in Art Space on Fifth West and 230 South.
Cool. Did you take your ocean themed mural with you? It's also gone.
Yeah, the tattoo shop painted over that. Some stickers that pay homage to it though.
Thank you. All right, any questions, council members? All right, well, thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Maxwell, did you hear my instructions about the formal meeting tonight?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, our next is also for the Bicycle Advisory Committee, Carrie Doan. Carrie, you there? Okay. Maybe we'll come back to Carrie. William Davis, are you out there?
I am out here.
Yay. So if you would tell us a little bit about yourself, what area of the city you live in and why you're interested in serving on this, on the Bicycle Advisory Committee?
Sure. My name is Will Davis. I live in District Two. I have been bike commuting pretty regularly now for about 20 years. All started about 2005 in Portland. And even before I moved to Salt Lake, I moved to Salt Lake in 2014. But even before I did that, it seemed like all I ever did was talk about bike infrastructure. And I would have a group of friends that we would read, read the 2032 Plan in Portland, which is their, basically their master document for bike transit. And we would just sit down and talk about that. So somebody handed me this and said, hey, you know what? All you do is talk about bike infrastructure with your friends, so you might as well join this group and maybe do something about safety and accessibility and at least put my two cents in where I can. As far as my cycling background, commuter, I, I commute every day. I play bike polo out at Jordan Park, mountain bike. So there's quite extensive background. I also travel a lot for bike polo. So I see a lot of different bike infrastructure in various cities, because when you travel for bike polo, all you do is, you're, you're basically, your bike is your transportation. I think that's the short, the short part, the short story.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for William?
Just want to discount, Will, thanks a lot. Appreciate the engagement, appreciate also the enthusiasm and the the press for more bikes and better bikeable city across the board. And this goes, well, Carrie's not here, but he's, Carrie's in District Six. So again, really appreciate all the work and the press for more biking and better, better bikeable city. So thank you.
Okay. Next, oh, sorry, I'll go and see if we have. Next...oh, sorry, I'll go and see if we have Carrie Doan. Are you here? This feels like a séance. Like, are you...do you hear us? Are you with us? Give us a sign. Okay, we'll go to Jeannie Rollo. Jeannie?
Yeah.
Yay! I summon you to come down here. Just make sure you turn the microphone on. And you don't need to hold it. You just turn it on once. Thanks. So tell us a little bit about yourself, what area of the city you're from, and why you're interested in serving also on the Bicycle Advisory Committee with some very new friends.
Yes. My name's Jeannie Rollo, and I am originally from Utah. I've lived in Salt Lake City since 1991. Like the other candidates, I'm an avid cyclist, commuter, road cyclist, mountain biker, but not bike polo. I don't do that. And I live in District Three.
Yeah.
In the avenues. Professionally, I am a pharmacist at the University of Utah Hospital for 31 years, and I have been working in the emergency room there for 19 years. So of course, I see my fair share of bicycle accidents at work, and safety is definitely a big concern of mine. And there's room for improvement always in everything in life, so I hope to join the Bicycle Advisory Committee and work on safety issues with the bike lanes and bike routes and just make biking more enjoyable throughout the city, and not just for commuting and not just for road cycling, but also for mountain biking, which no one else has brought up yet.
I was going to ask you, are you a visitor of the I Street Bike Park?
I have been to the I Street Bike Park with my child. I personally don't like to take those risks, but I don't mind watching my child take those risks.
I was going to say, I thought I saw you doing like a backflip.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, well, any other questions? Anyone?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Pui.
I would like to encourage Jeannie to join the very well-organized bike polo that is happening in District Two in the Jordan Park. It's a sight certainly to just watch, but no, to be serious, I appreciate the new energy and the focus from recreation to commuting that you bring into the committee, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeannie. Oh, you were here for the comments about tonight? Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, another Bicycle Advisory Committee nominee, Rebecca Bauer.
Hi, I'm here online.
Hello. Thanks for joining us. So please tell us a little bit about yourself, what area of the city you live in, and why you're interested in serving on the Bicycle Advisory Board.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I live in District Seven, and I have been in Utah since 2018 and have been in love with bikes since, basically, I could ride them when I was maybe three or four. I currently am the Vice President of the Ascena Cycling Club, which is a new women's-only bike racing club slash community. And we are...it's been amazing to see just, we thought we were going to be five friends riding bikes together this year, and we're now almost 50. So I'm excited to bring that perspective to the council and just bring the racing scene into kind of city world as well. In addition to that, I also work for a bike tour operator that operates in southern Utah, so I see that tourism side of things as well. But yeah, I'm really excited, and thanks for having me.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Rebecca? Rebecca, did you hear my instructions about the meeting tonight?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much, and we will move on to...uh-oh, that was our last one, but we have Carrie, who's trying to join us. They're currently in a different time zone, so...
We heard that she'll be joining in a minute, so maybe if...
I'm here.
Oh, great.
She's here. You made it. Carrie, great. So good to hear your voice, and we can see you, unlike the others, so...
I'm so sorry about that. We're sitting here going, okay, I have a whole hour, and I'm in Page, Arizona, so just barely in Arizona, and they don't go on daylight savings, as maybe you know, so apologies.
No problem at all. We're glad you could be here. So please tell us a little bit about yourself, what area of the city you live in, and why you're interested in serving on the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Thank you, yes. My name is Carrie Doan. I'm in District Six, and I'm retired. And I'm retired from an almost 20-year career with the Utah Transit Authority. So my experience and my work experience with transportation planning in general, but transit also specifically, is something I wanted to share, continue to share in my retirement, as well as being sort of a...I'm a multi-sort of type cyclist. I was a commuter when I went to work. Now I don't commute very far, especially at 8:00 in the morning. And I also ride recreationally and for exercise, and I am, I would say, looking to keep riding as I age and continue my retirement and bring those sorts of kind of a multi-factor perspective to the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Excellent. Well, I love the...oh, sorry, I'll let your councilmember speak first. Councilmember Dugan.
Carrie, thanks a lot for the engagement and thanks a lot for stepping into the Bicycle Advisory Committee, so love having you there and love your support, so thanks.
Yeah, and I appreciate your support as well. Thank you, Dan.
I just wanted to say I am really excited that you have both the personal experience as a biker, but also the professional experience of working with UTA. I feel like that is going to be so invaluable as we talk about active transportation integrating with the city's overall transportation plan, so thank you for being willing to serve and bring your professional skills with you.
Happy to. Thank you so much.
All right. That concludes the séance, so the table will come down onto the floor now. We are going to go backwards in time. This is really metaphysical meeting.
We're going to enter a closed session, but I can do...oh, no. Closed session, I think, is our next agenda.
Or we don't want to do announcements?
We'll do announcements after the last agenda item.
Oh, right. Okay. Okay, so we're going back now to...we have scheduled a tentative closed session, so I will look for a motion.
Move to enter closed session for the purpose of receiving advice of council?
And deployment of security.
And deployment of security.
And litigation, right?
Litigation?
You're talking about the pending or reasonably imminent litigation? I think that could be covered.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, why not? Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Mono and a second from Councilmember Dugan. We will go ahead and roll-call this, starting with you, Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
And Councilmember Pui?
Yes.
Mono?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. That is six yeses with one councilmember absent, Councilmember Lopez Chavez. We will be in closed session. If you are not one of the people that's authorized to be here in here during the closed session, if you'd please step out for a moment. We will come back after the closed session for our last agenda item, which is number nine, city flag standards, and then our announcements.
[1716.62]
but they are fundamental to America, even through all its struggles to uphold them. I am not interested in any debate about the rightness of these values. They are American. They are ours, and they are right. How they are implemented is the only matter in question. We are in the business of improving the day-to-day lives of our residents and our future residents. It's a work that comes first from the heart. And I have had the honor of hearing from countless Utahns from all walks of life, different faith traditions and none in particular, different income, education, race, ethnicity, gender, age, who have told me again and again why they chose Salt Lake City as their home. Because here, they are free to live lives that are authentic, honest, and respected by this community, even through our differences. In fact, it's the same reason I chose to make Salt Lake City my home. And so, we took this recent legislation banning nonofficial city flags as an opportunity to reflect on our singular Salt Lake City flag and ask ourselves, "Does this do enough to represent our city? Does it alone, quote, 'personify' the people who live in the city it represents?" end quote. In reality, my administration has flown four flags throughout each year, every year since I've served as mayor. These are flags that I am proud to see flying over Washington Square because they represent the values of this city, of our community. And though I am not gay, I am not trans, I am not black, I feel a strong heartfelt connection to these symbols. They represent our American values, sewn in color and cloth. And so, in lieu of this defining legislation, I have determined that when it comes to representing our city's values, I know we can do more than fly a single flag, three more, to be precise. Today, I'm proposing the formal adoption of four city flags via ordinance. First, the traditional Sago lily that was previously adopted by resolution is now included in the ordinance before you. Over the past five years, the new flag has grown to be a symbol of pride and unity for our city, and the Sago lily has become a highly recognizable emblem of Salt Lake City, so much so that we have adopted it as part of a third official city seal. Second, Salt Lake City flag that represents the history of Juneteenth, our city's Black and African-American residents and our deep pride in them. Historically, each year on the third week of June, Salt Lake City has raised the Juneteenth flag to commemorate the end of slavery in the United States and celebrate the success, creativity, and brilliance of Black and African-American Salt Lakers. This new Salt Lake City Sago Visibility flag combines the Sago lily's beauty and resilience with that of the iconic bursting star representing freedom, the arc representing a new horizon of opportunity for Black Americans, and red symbolizing the bloodshed by those who were enslaved. Its united symbols represent Salt Lake City's values of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and our celebration of Black excellence. Next, I propose a Salt Lake City flag that represents the city's LGBTQIA residents as well as our broader city's acceptance and love of this community. Each year during June, with the exception of Juneteenth, we have historically raised the Pride flag to celebrate Pride Month and the nearly 10% of Americans who identify as part of the LGBTQIA community, thousands of whom call Salt Lake City home. The Pride Parade and Festival have existed in our city for over 40 years. This new Salt Lake City Sago Belonging flag combines the beauty and resilience communicated by the Sago lily with that of the rainbow, which represents beauty and diversity of the community, and the arrow of black, brown, light blue, pink, and white, which represents marginalized communities and forward progress. And finally, I propose a Salt Lake City flag that symbolizes the city's transgender community and our community's commitment to seeing and celebrating them. Each year during Transgender Day of Visibility, Transgender Awareness Week, and Transgender Day of Remembrance, the city has historically raised the transgender Pride flag to uplift and honor those in our community who identify as a different gender than what they were assigned at birth. This new Salt Lake City Sago Visibility flag combines the Sago lily as an emblem of beauty and resilience with pink and blue stripes used to represent men and women, and the white stripe, which represents those who are non-binary, intersex, transitioning, or otherwise gender nonconforming. In all three of these new proposed flags, the Sago in the upper hoist canton of each of these designs is our city's most recognized emblem, leaving no question that each flag is representative of Salt Lake City specifically. A Utah state senator once said, "People don't rally behind the flag. They rally behind the ideals and principles that a flag represents." In each of these flags, our city's residents see that representation, representation of themselves, representation of the people and communities they love and care about, and representation of the broad, beautifully diverse makeup of this city. These city flags represent the ideals and principles Salt Lakers know as core tenants: belonging and acceptance, or better stated, diversity, equity, and inclusion. So, a question you might have is, why today?
Mayor, thank you for being here for Agenda Item Number Nine, which is City Flag Standards.
Take it away.
Take it away.
Thank you, Council, for making time for this tonight. And please excuse my voice. It only just returned to me earlier today. As you know, in 2020, I worked in partnership with the Salt Lake City Council at the time on a process to design a new city flag. On its face, it was an audacious and auspicious time to take on such a project. When the flag redesign launched in May of 2020, we were well into a global pandemic, and there was a lot of uncertainty in the country and in our community. At the time, I said, "A good flag has the ability to unite the city that works under it and personify the people that live in that city that it represents." The eventual flag adopted via resolution is the one that you have here and you see here to my left. It's the same one that flies on the South Catwalk of City Hall today. A field of blue over white with a white Sago lily with three petals in the upper hoist cannon. The flag symbolism stuck almost immediately with people drawn specifically to the Sago lily, which is emblematic of the beauty, tenacity, and resilience of Salt Lakers. Now, as you know, House Bill 77 was recently passed, and this bill narrows the types of flags that cities are able to display publicly on our government property unless the flag meets the criteria outlined in the bill of that of an exempted flag. Among the exempted flags Salt Lake City is able to fly, we are allowed, quote, "a flag that represents a city, municipality, county, or political subdivision of the state" as those terms are defined in state code. When this law passed, we looked at it very closely to understand how we can abide by it while still representing Salt Lakers and the values that guide us, including our long-held values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. It is not a new position for our city's fundamental values to be in conflict with the values of a majority of the legislature, who in this case voted in favor of HB 77. This place of misalignment is something that we are actually built to navigate through the United States of America's design. We can have conflict. Indeed, our nation was built to exercise the capacity for such disagreement and be better because of it. We can decide to disagree respectfully or disagree better, as our good governor often says. As mayor, I have a duty to lawfully uphold the values of our nation, state, and our city. I know that the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion are not only right and just, but they are fundamental to America, even through all its struggles to uphold them. I am not interested in any debate about the rightness of these values. They are American, they are ours, and they are right. How they are implemented is the only matter in question. We are in the business of improving the day-to-day lives of our residents and our future residents. It's a work that comes first from the heart. And I have had the honor of hearing from countless Utahns from all walks of life, different faith traditions and none in particular, different income, education, race, ethnicity, gender, age, who have told me again and again why they chose Salt Lake City as their home. Because here, they are free to live lives that are authentic, honest, and respected by this community, even through our differences. In fact, it's the same reason I chose to make Salt Lake City my home. And so we took this recent legislation banning nonofficial city flags as an opportunity to reflect on our singular Salt Lake City flag and ask ourselves, "Does this do enough to represent our city? Does it alone, quote, 'personify' the people who live in the city it represents?" end quote. In reality, my administration has flown four flags throughout each year, every year since I've served as mayor. These are flags that I am proud to see flying over Washington Square because they represent the values of this city, of our community. And though I am not gay, I am not trans, I am not black, I feel a strong heartfelt connection to these symbols. They represent our American values, sewn in color and cloth. And so in lieu of this defining legislation, I have determined that when it comes to representing our city's values, I know we can do more than fly a single flag, three more, to be precise. Today, I'm proposing the formal adoption of four city flags via ordinance. First, the traditional Sago lily that was previously adopted by resolution is now included in the ordinance before you. Over the past five years, the new flag has grown to be a symbol of pride and unity for our city, and the Sago lily has become a highly recognizable emblem of Salt Lake City, so much so that we have adopted it as part of a third official city seal. Second, Salt Lake City flag that represents the history of Juneteenth, our city's Black and African-American residents and our deep pride in them. Historically, each year on the third week of June, Salt Lake City has raised the Juneteenth flag to commemorate the end of slavery in the United States and celebrate the success, creativity, and brilliance of Black and African-American Salt Lakers. This new Salt Lake City Sago Celebration flag combines the Sago lily's beauty and resilience with that of the iconic bursting star representing freedom, the arc representing a new horizon of opportunity for Black Americans, and red symbolizing the bloodshed by those who were enslaved. Its united symbols represent Salt Lake City's values of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and our celebration of Black excellence. Next, I propose a Salt Lake City flag that represents the city's LGBTQIA residents, community members, as well as our broader city's acceptance and love of this community. Each year during June, with the exception of Juneteenth, we have historically raised the Pride flag to celebrate Pride Month and the nearly 10% of Americans who identify as part of the LGBTQIA community, thousands of whom call Salt Lake City home. The Pride Parade and Festival have existed in our city for over 40 years. This new Salt Lake City Sago Belonging flag combines the beauty and resilience communicated by the Sago lily with that of the rainbow, which represents beauty and diversity of the community, and the arrow of black, brown, light blue, pink, and white, which represents marginalized communities and forward progress. And finally, I propose a Salt Lake City flag that symbolizes the city's transgender community and our community's commitment to seeing and celebrating them. Each year during Transgender Day of Visibility, Transgender Awareness Week, and Transgender Day of Remembrance, the city has historically raised the transgender Pride flag to uplift and honor those in our community who identify as a different gender than what they were assigned at birth. This new Salt Lake City Sago Visibility flag combines the Sago lily as an emblem of beauty and resilience with pink and blue stripes used to represent men and women, and the white stripe, which represents those who are non-binary, intersex, transitioning, or otherwise gender nonconforming. In all three of these new proposed flags, the Sago in the upper hoist canton of each of these designs is our city's most recognized emblem, leaving no question that each flag is representative of Salt Lake City specifically. A Utah state senator once said, "People don't rally behind the flag. They rally behind the ideals and principles that a flag represents." In each of these flags, our city's residents see that representation, representation of themselves, representation of the people and communities they love and care about, and representation of the broad, beautifully diverse makeup of this city. These city flags represent the ideals and principles Salt Lakers know as core tenants, belonging and acceptance, or better stated, diversity, equity, and inclusion. So a question you might have is, "Why today and why like this?" I want to be clear with you. I have given this so much thought, and I do not do this lightly. And my sincere intent is not to provoke or cause division. My intent is to represent our city's values and honor our dear diverse residents who make up this beautiful city and the legacy of pain and progress that they have endured. It was recently said that symbols displayed in classrooms and government buildings should represent unity, and I agree with that. Today, more than ever before, symbols hold incredible power to unite us in a time when so much uncertainty, so much fear threatens to divide us. Our city symbols must leave no doubt that we are a united city and a united people. Let the Sago lily represent the beauty and resilience of everyone who lives here, no matter their race, ethnicity, gender, faith, income, or sexual orientation. In Salt Lake City, I want each and every resident to look up at any flag that flies at City Hall and be reminded that their community values belonging and acceptance, and that their community values every one of them. Let the Sago lily send a simple but powerful message. Salt Lake City is here for you. We believe in you, and we love you. And so I propose these flags to you today for the purpose of officially symbolizing and representing the ideals and values of Salt Lake City and the spectrum of our beautiful residents through symbols under which we have historically and can continue to unite under as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for that presentation and for going through each of the flags and explaining not only their significance to the greater community, but their significance in history here in Salt Lake City. Council members, are there any questions? Okay, well, we can take a break from our, or adjourn our work session. And this is placed on the agenda for tonight at our formal meeting for action. And we'll see everybody then. Thank you. Announcements?
Hard to follow that, but just wanted to talk about some calendar dates so that you guys can update your calendars. I know that we had placed some holds on your calendars for some Thursday meetings throughout the budget. We do not need a Thursday meeting on May 8th or May 15th. And in fact, maybe it's easier to just read through the dates that we are confirming. So we'll meet Tuesday, May 13th as the CRA and Council, Tuesday, May 20th as the CRA and Council, Thursday, May 22nd, so that's a Thursday work session as just the Council. There will be no work session on Tuesday after Memorial Day, as was discussed. There will be a work session on Thursday, May 29th. And then Tuesday, June 3rd, the chair wanted me to highlight as probably the day where you will go through most of your unresolved issues and strawpoles, and so kind of prepare to have a lot of your questions addressed before that, and we'll, of course, try to help you with that. Thursday, June, sorry, June 3rd.
June 3rd.
And then Thursday, June 5th, we'll reserve as like a shorter work session if we have sort of loose ends to tie up with a goal of adopting the budget on June 10th. Tentatively hold June 12th, Thursday, if the June 10th date is not possible to adopt the budget on that date. So those are just dates for your awareness. Thank you.
Yeah, so just want to reemphasize. So I really hope that if there are any ideas or proposals or thoughts that you haven't shared with your colleagues yet, that you do that before the June 3rd meeting so that we can do the unresolved issues. And then the June 5th is kind of like the cleanup, loose ends meeting. So I hope that makes sense. I know we just wanted to be extra, signpost that for everybody so that there, you can keep it on your radars and, yeah, have those conversations accordingly.
And one thing that I think will help with that is there's a clipboard going around for council members to sign up for small group meetings with each other. I think that will help with kind of narrowing down those ideas. So, thanks.